Independent School District Board of Trustees order. A formal board members' presence being duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. As I mentioned, Sue Jordan is unable to be with us due to illness. But everybody else is here. We're going to begin in this room so we can do a workshop setting. And then we'll move -- hopefully, we'll have a break so that we can reset, move the camera, and get reset in our regular boardroom. But we wanted to be able to kind of do a little closer work group kind of a setting. So thank you all for joining us tonight. We have some special guests with us who are not just guests, they're kind of like family because they're here so much. So we're going to begin with Jennifer, who -- and just as a reminder, we -- when she was here last time, we asked her to go back and kind of rethink numbers with some little different assumptions to see what might -- what the projections would look like using historical instead of just the conservative approach. We then, when we met in our workshop setting, what is almost three and a half weeks ago, almost three weeks ago, we talked again about that, about what the tax implications of different plans and different aspects of our plans. So we want to start with that because that will get us most currently up to date. And then we'll kind of go to Jared and we'll see what you -- what y'all have for us. So Jennifer, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you all. Can y'all see me down here?
Yes.
Going to drive the computer here, I'm not good. This little thing. Okay, so we've been talking with you all about tax rate impact for going on two years now. We've been going through this election process. One thing to keep in mind is that as we start a couple of years out, obviously, we have to be pretty conservative because we don't -- we make assumptions just like everybody else does. And those assumptions, we essentially start from the position of trying to be almost worst case because we have to assume that, you know, if interest rates go up and tax base goes down, how much can y'all borrow under state law? So that's kind of where we start. But tonight, we're at the point where we're getting closer to the election. I think we can tighten up to most assumptions based upon conversations. So again, as a reminder, the factors that influence the tax rate impact, you go out, you borrow money. How does that actually factor into the tax rate? The bond interest rate is going to be the largest piece of that. Again, something that you have very little control over. The market is what it is. You have a strong bond rating at the double A minus, so that helps with the interest rate, but only so much if interest rates go up in the market or go down. You'd be the benefit or negatively impacted. Growth in the district's taxable assessed valuation, so again, that's the tax base. That's all of the taxable, not tax exempt property, but all of the taxable property within Belton ISD, so within the city of Belton and city of Temple, all of them that are in Belton ISD. That grows or could decline. After the 2008 downturn, you actually didn't have any declines in Belton ISD, although a lot of districts across the state did, certainly some in Bell County did. But you all didn't have any declines, but you slowed down quite a bit and certainly that's to be expected when we have an economic downturn. So historically, since 2008, which was the start of that bad year, you've grown at an average of about 2.5% per year. Currently, last year, you grew at 5.11%. So the 5% may be a little bit more what we could anticipate in short term, but even considering the bad downturn that you had in 2008, you still grew at 2.5%. So that gives us a good starting point. Estimated state assistance. So the state will fund a portion of your debt service, meaning if you're paying a debt service payment, the agreement that they have with districts that they consider to be in need of some assistance on these projects is existing debt allotment. You qualify for that on your existing bonds, and they're currently paying about a third of the debt service. So Austin currently chips in about a third of the debt service. Belton taxpayers pick up the other two thirds of it. That's how it currently is set. We'll talk a little bit more about that. It's a complicated formula as to how the state picks up that share. Ultimately, the takeaway is that that's based upon the property wealth of the district. So property poor districts receive more assistance from the state. Property wealthy districts, like your Eames and Lake Travis's, they don't receive anything. They give money back to the state to other programs, not the debt. But you're at about a third. That can change, that does change from year to year based upon how wealthy you are considered. And the wealth is essentially a calculation of water or the average daily attendance and your tax base. So ideally, if your tax base is increasing, your enrollment or water is going to be increasing even more than that to keep that state share up there. Obviously, a wild card could always be if the state decides not to fund it. We haven't heard that that'll be happening, but certainly, that's always out there.
That would be pretty dramatic change statewide, not just for us, but that's pretty unlikely just because of the --
They don't ever talk about that. And I think the reason being is that they, through the permanent school fund guarantee, the state of Texas guarantees school debt, so if they took away a third of it, just default. You wouldn't want to do it, but the state has to pay for it ultimately.
And there are districts who get twice that or more.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's unlikely to change. What we're -- what we think is that they should fully fund EDA and so that we would be equalized with all school districts. There will be taxpayer equity. That's a legislative issue that we address every legislative session.
So you're currently at about a third of that. It's difficult to predict going forward how wealthy or poor you may be. It's difficult to predict if they'll fund the program in full or not fund it in full. You also only qualify up to 29 cents of INS tax rate. You're currently at 27 cents. So really, in our assumptions, we can't give too much benefit to the new issue of getting EDA. But one thing that we can do is be more aggressive about assuming that the old issues, which you still have, millions of dollars that you're paying off on those, that those continue to receive assistance from the state at similar levels that they currently are, and that will obviously impact your capacity.
So these assumptions are based on no assistance on the new debt?
Correct. No assistance on the new debt.
So if there was assistance on the new debt, then?
It would be better.
It would be better. So this is a conservative approach, assuming no assistance on the new debt, just carrying on the old debt.
Correct. But you are close to maxed out on the new issuance. You have about two pennies, but two pennies could be about $200,000. So it is money. So, but yes, correct. And if you were to approve the bonds in May and sell prior to 8/31, with the November election, we didn't get to count on any of that because it would have been passed to states by any kind of cutoff. But with a May election, we actually will, if you decide to, if the voters approve this and you sell it prior to 8/31 and have a payment prior to 8/31, we actually will qualify the new issuance immediately for EDA. So to your point, Mr. Pittenger, you could feel a little bit of benefit from that immediately.
Which actually raises the point, and I want to make sure we pause in here because one of the first questions, we've talked around this a lot and planned around this, but one of our key questions in all of this, everything, is are we firm on the May? And it saves us millions of dollars. You told us that in Tax Impact here, it has told us about construction costs and how many significant savings it would save. You'll address that, I'm sure, later. But that's one of our decision points.
Interest rate.
The first interest rate. One of our decision points is May versus November. So I want to make sure that's on the list of our discussion point.
Yeah, good point. And the May election on that last bullet allows us to tighten up everything. Yes, sir? Did you have something to add?
I was just going to, hey, Deanna, would you help us? Would you keep, we have some note things. Would you write down there the things we need to be sure we address so we can check them off before we get out of here? If you could help us with that. The May or November election, I guess is the first one. Thank you.
So I think all of us probably, and not to speak for these guys too, but in doing assumptions, you know, the closer we are to, in our case, the sale date, in their case, obviously, the building start date, we can tighten our assumptions. We're not so nervous. So we're looking now at potentially a May election. With a May election, we can be a lot more historically accurate, I would say, on our assumptions as opposed to as conservative. Because if we're talking about a November election, the earliest we could issue bonds of the November election would be January of 2018. I can't tell you what's going to happen to interest rates in a year. I'm more comfortable guessing what'll happen to them would be selling June or July. That doesn't give me as much concern as projecting that a whole year. Certainly, and we'll talk about interest rates a little bit going forward, but certainly since the election, they have gone up. And we've got a chart sort of at the end that we'll visit about. But I think everyone in the market assumes that they will continue to go up this year. The first increase from the Fed is expected to be in June. Of course, the markets will price that in prior to June, so it doesn't really behoove us to rush to try and get there before they do because it won't matter. But nonetheless, everyone's expecting there to be, you know, kind of creeps up in the interest rate. And part of that could be that there's uncertainties surrounding the administration. If there are tax cuts on the federal level, your bonds again are tax exempt from federal income taxation. So having a municipal bond that's tax exempt versus maybe a treasury bond at a lower yield, it's not as appealing to an investor if that tax rate is not as high as it is today. So we do have something in the market that could make our interest rates go up. You could almost call it a correction because interest rates have been so low for so long that investors are kind of weary of investing money and getting not too much in return. So nonetheless, with the May election, I'm more comfortable projecting where we are in rates. And we'll talk about the rates. If you start talking about a year or so down the road, obviously, we have to put in a cushion, for lack of a better phrase. So kind of for some historical perspective, same thing happened in 2012. I know some of you were on the board as well back then. We always show you all very conservative assumptions to start out, and this conversation starts to emerge as we get closer to the election of like, well, what if, you know, what if our tax base grows where it has been the last few years? And what if we do continue to receive EDA? And maybe what if interest rates are better than what you've been projecting going forward? So we always have our conservative numbers, which is where we start. And then as we got, we came out with more of a historical average perspective as well. Some of you may recall that. So we were starting out with what the impact would be of those bonds, of 13 cents. As we approached the election, we put together something that was based on a historical performance with the tax base growth and with more of an interest rate perspective, and brought it down to 11.7 cents. So, you know, not a significant difference, but that was a smaller election than what we're looking at today. So it dropped from 13 cents to 11.7. And then the board used that historical average of 11.7 to put out to the public. And it was very defensible. And obviously, it turned out to be almost right on top of where you came in. So it was only two cents of a penny lower at 11.5 cents and the 11.7. So you still did a little bit better.
The first year.
The first year. And then the second year drops even more than that because EDA came online in the second year, and that's what we've been anticipating as well. So you had a big drop thereafter. It was a different philosophy than what you had in the past because in the past, we'd always been conservative, and then you had these massive drops in tax rate, which I think some prior boards probably liked having. It's going to be, you know, five pennies today, and then we'll actually be lower in a couple of years than where we were today, and we can go ahead and do new bonds and no tax impact. So it was a different philosophy, but nonetheless, it was right on top of it. And you did continue to drop thereafter when the EDA came online. Not the exact same extent that you had in the past. You weren't quite as low as you had then, but nonetheless, you certainly were right on top of what you told the voters, which is probably the important point. So for this election, given that we've been running conservative numbers, we're getting close to the actual calling of the election potentially, and getting close to the ability to go ahead and issue, we kept our conservative assumption, which is that for $150 million, you'll sort of max out close to 50 cents. But then we went back and did what we did in 2012 and put in the historical average perspective. Kind of talked about these points already. Okay, and again, you know, our sort of, in a legislative year, there could be some changes.
Could even get better for us, although since the Supreme Court's out for making public.
We always say that.
Yeah, we always, always would.
I guess we always assume we were.
We always be hopeful, we always hope they'll do the right thing even though they haven't.
We haven't, we haven't heard too much about, I mean, last session, they made the change with the home state exemption for schools. So I don't think you guys, I don't see you being hurt too much this one, but we'll wait and see what happens. So hopefully, this year will just be neutral. That's all we can hope for, right, is neutral. And then, of course, out of Washington, there may be some changes that'll affect this as well. Okay, so what that boils down to here in the brass tacks and probably what's the most important and interesting here is our conservative assumption again for $150 million. Issued in two phases, by the way. Again, we'd have $100 million issued immediately in July in our assumptions. And then in 2019, we would issue the remaining $50 million. So with our conservative numbers that we're using, that we feel very confident, even if the bottom drops out of the market and your tax base doesn't grow and you don't get any new EDA, we're confident we can do it for 23 cents. You know, if all things go down, we're confident the community can get $150 million for 23 cents. But if we're going to base this on more rosy pictures and actually historically what you've looked like the last few years, that 23 cents will drop to just under 19 cents at 1871, which leaves you a little bit of capacity going forward for future projects as well, which I know is a concern of the board. And what that looks like, I know this is, do you have it in your package?
Yeah.
And I want to try and make you, make you look at that. But essentially, let's talk about what these assumptions are. So this is the conservative one that we've been running all along. In the near term, I will point out, okay, kind of hard to see here, but in the freeze adjusted assessable tax valuation is the one that we're using here. We're actually, in our numbers, using 5% growth for the first couple of years because you grew at 5.11% this year and then 6% the prior year. But then thereafter, we're dropping to 1.5%. You really haven't grown as little as 1.5% in, you know, since I've been around doing this. So the 1.5% is obviously very conservative. It doesn't really impact your capacity because, again, we're not going to have this growth and we have to pass the 50 cent test. And what that means is essentially, if you come, if the voters approve bonds in May and you come back to sell in July, we'll know what the taxable assessed valuation is for that year. We'll already have it in hand. So it'll be the number that you have to use for the capacity. But what it will mostly affect, if this changes in the 1.5% growth there on the back end, that tax rate in the future where we show it hanging out here, you know, 50 cents, essentially just under 50 cents for several years, that'll start to drop much, much more quickly, creating additional capacity for the district much sooner. The assumptions in terms of interest rates, let's kind of, it doesn't list it on here, but I'll just tell you. So the Series 2017, that's a 30-year issue at a 4.24%. It's the same number we've been using all along. At this point in the game, we don't want to get around changing the interest rate on you guys, and then that can make some big differences and you wonder why it looks so different. So it's a 4.24%. That is still about 50 basis points or 0.5%, half a percentage point difference, I mean, excuse me, higher than what current market rates are. When we started this game a couple of years ago, the interest rate that we were assuming was 150 basis points higher than current market rate, meaning 1.5% higher than where the rates were. Since that time, the election has happened, and we've lost about, not quite 100 basis points, but pretty close to 100 basis points. But we still have 50 basis points cushion. So again, just to kind of reiterate, when we are conservative in our assumptions, that's why. The market can move very quickly against us. So I'm still comfortable having 50 basis points of cushion in there. I don't want to go below that because I think between now and June, we may need all of that. But of course, if nothing changes, we'll be better than this. On the Series 2019, the rate that we're using is a 4.39, which is 15 basis points higher in two years. It actually seems like that's probably not enough in a two-year change. But nonetheless, what's happening with that issue is that it's much more level. So it's paying off quicker, it's a shorter useful life. It's actually about a 50 basis points difference if you take out the eager rapids to apples in terms of how quickly the principal fee will be paid. So don't worry about that one too much. State assistance here, these are the ones that we've been using all along, our model that shows you getting more and more property wealthy quite quickly. So, you know, based on our sort of limited expertise in state assistance models and not knowing how your enrollment's going to be, I know you have some forecasts for that, but just to be pessimist here, we're assuming that your tax base is going to grow at 5% for the next couple of years and then 1.5% thereafter, and that your enrollment will not keep pace, your enrollment will essentially stay flat. That is what would happen to your state assistance if that were to play out.
It's kind of ironic to say, well, we wouldn't need new facilities if we're not growing. And if we don't grow, how do you have your estimated growth so low with that assumption that they are, we're growing?
Well, the tax base.
This is a worst-case scenario that if everything bad goes, we grow in value and don't grow in students.
It would be that you're becoming a more wealthy community.
Yeah, which is not what anybody's demographic would protect.
In the area, obviously, like temples in that situation, they're different because they're very industrial.
Right.
But essentially.
Change their dynamic.
Exactly. But essentially, that would be that if all of a sudden the appraisal district starts to appraise Belton ISD as the place to live, and these home values start to just really kind of skyrocket, and the enrollment stays flat, which a lot of communities, that happens to. I know that's not the situation you're in, and certainly, it wouldn't be the situation where you wouldn't need all these buildings in the future because you wouldn't have the enrollment. So yes, it is a worst-case assumption on the state assistance. And where that puts you out is the same numbers that we've been looking all along and puts you at the 50 cents. So in a worst-case scenario, we think that you can get $150 million, worst case. But if we're going to use the historical assumptions, and I'll tell you what the difference between those are, the interest rates stay the same. Again, I'm not comfortable projecting any lower on the interest rate than the 50 basis points cushion that we currently have in there. But instead of having 1.5% growth on your tax base in the future, what you have here is 2.5% growth until this period of time that we're looking at is gone. So we've gone from 1.5% to 2.5%.
Although Jennifer, one thing that's interesting to me is on 2018, 19, and 20, you've actually decreased the growth, which seems more conservative to me than what your previous model that you call the conservative. This seems more conservative to me because it's lower for three more, closer years, cutting it in half. So my interpretation of that is this is a more conservative way to approach it. But I hear you.
Yeah.
Why you use that, but isn't that right? There's three, the 18, 19, and 20 years, you've dropped from 5% to 2.5% growth. So actually, if we have 5% growth, it would be
This gets better, of course.
Like your conservative estimates were.
Right.
That it's lower than that.
Yeah, and this was just for consistency on the other. On the other model, we've been using 5% all along. We didn't want to all of a sudden drop it to 1.5% because that would look really awful. So in its, I don't think it's reasonable. So this was just, hey, here's 2.5%, and we'll talk about the other assumptions and what that means. But yes, absolutely, like for instance, this year, you haven't obviously seen preliminary numbers yet, but this will, this will change prior to the election because we'll have some preliminary numbers in there that we can plug in that hard number for 2018. So yes, you're correct.
Preliminary by May? I don't know about that. That'd be early for them.
The preliminary comes in March timeframe, preliminary, not the certified. You get certified in July. So we will be able to publish a preliminary figure. I know Bell County is always pretty conservative on that. But if it's even conservative, I bet you're more than 2.5%.
Right.
So that will hopefully look good pretty soon. So there's that figure. The other difference, though, the big difference, and this is where it makes a difference, is the state assistance column. So on that one, we kind of, we discussed this with everyone here in the administration and kind of said, what's a fair number to assume? We don't necessarily, we know that you're almost capped out in terms of your INS support. Again, 29 cents is the cap for the state. You're at 27 cents. So are you going to get a lot of benefit from EDA on the new bonds? But is it fair to say that you're going to get so property wealthy on the old bonds that you start losing out in the other scenario that we showed? So what we came up with is what was fair, is let's just leave it where it is. Just on the old bonds, not the new bonds, but let's just say nothing else changes. Your property wealthy status essentially stays exactly where it is. You don't get any more money, but you don't get any less money. Let's just leave it at roughly, you know, 2.9 and change in state assistance. And that's what makes a big difference. So in this model, good point, about the 5% for the first three years for the tax base growth. But the big change being shown here is that your state assistance is keeping at current levels. It's not dropping off like we had it. And you can see what that means in terms of the immediate impact of the tax rate. It goes from our previous scenario of roughly 23 cents to 18.7 cents. And then thereafter, it actually, once we get past the second phase issuance, it starts to drop pretty well. So I mean, we're not calling this, and that's a good point about your, this is still not, this is still kind of conservative. I mean, we never want to call it super conservative because if something happens in the interest rate, we might need a little bit of that tax-based conservatism to make up for the interest rate. So we still have, we're kind of like moving balls around here in the air. But I certainly wouldn't call this aggressive at all. I would still call this real world.
There's three variables, though, that I would say are on the conservative end, which I'm comfortable with, by the way. I don't mean to say I like that. I'd much rather it's coming below than
Better than worse.
Than, because we've got a good history of that, which we'll see.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, this is not, this is not aggressive. I mean, this is what I would consider to be real world. I would call this, and you're asking me to phrase it, I'd call it fair assumptions, maybe, you know, for lack of a better, it is historical, but I think this is fair. I think this is probably more what we will see if nothing changes between now and when we issue.
Yeah, I meant to do this earlier. Let me just, Phil, thank you for working with Jennifer in terms of giving these numbers and helping respond back to us with the information. We'll appreciate your efforts to get us that information.
Okay. Okay, so general assumptions, one thing again that is different, and then we've kind of hammered this, but I just want to point that out, that we are using, unlike previous elections, the, I think, philosophy within the business offices that you can start using, which we totally agree with, start using some of the frozen tax collections to downpay or to pay off the debt. Previously, that money was just being put into fund balance, which was great. You had a lot of fund balance to work with. But it didn't help to lower the tax rate. Now, it's actually being, a portion of that is being applied to lower the tax rate. So that was also a reason why in prior elections, that tax rate dropped so quickly because you had this big fund balance and you kind of buy it off. So we are using not all of it, I think it's 60, 75% of it. So you still will be adding to fund balance. We are using a portion of that to lower the tax rate, which is really what the purpose of tax elections is, right? And then the interest rate that we're assuming, again, 4 and 1/4 for the first issuance and then 4.39 for the second issuance, both a 30-year term. If for some reason, interest rates got much better between now and when you issue, you could actually probably shorten that term up a little bit, or we could just lower the tax rate. We have choices to miss about. So this is the model that you're probably used to seeing from us quite a bit. It's a 10-year history of what we'll call the average interest rate in the municipal bond market. This is a national average. Texas tends to do a little bit better. But kind of what I want to show you here is this blue line. The left is 10 years ago, the far right side of the page is today. But you can see from that blue line, there was a pretty big spike, like a good spike, after the election. But nonetheless, we still have a little bit of cushion still left in there. If that same spike were to occur again, we'd be over what our anticipated interest rates were. So just to kind of show you where the volatility is in the market. We're still good today. We're just going to hope for no more surprises in the market. And that box there that says percent of the time, interest rates have been lower, excuse me, higher than the current. We usually, when we sold refunding bonds for you guys, for example, it's like 97% of the time, interest rates have been higher than they are today. Now you can see, we're still in a very good interest rate environment. Interest rates have been higher 68% of the time, but it's not that same 97, 98%. So just to kind of a little historical perspective as well.
Still below what you're projecting in the first.
Correct, exactly. Again, this is just the history with the community of where you advertised interest rates to the end of the election than where they ended up being. So in 2003, you told the voters there'd be an increase in 13 and 1/2 cents. It actually came in at 7.6 cents. That's when we were being conservative, really, really conservative with what we told the voters. Same in 2006, actually, not quite the same in 2006. I think we had that spike in interest rates. We were told 8.3 cents to the voters. It actually came in at 8 cents, but then it dropped very quickly thereafter the first year.
The next year then went down significantly.
Yeah, exactly.
It was a one year. That's the next one.
And then in 2009, 5.4 cents. It came in at 1 cent. And then in 2012, again, the 11.7 cents. It came in at 11.5 cents and then dropped 4.4 cents the next year when we got EDA online, which we already discussed.
Actually, I think it dropped more than that. On that slide, it shows 7.1 cents is what our INS dropped from 13 to 14. Isn't that right? So anyway, the point is well taken. As you can see, our, the INS, which is the red part of that, has gone up when we've had a bond issue, but not as much as we projected, and then it's come down and then come down again. So even like the 2012 election, it went up, but not as much as we thought, and then it came down significantly the next year, and then came down again. So. So you've made this statement several times, and I appreciated how you've said it. The voters have actually approved capacity well beyond what our tax rate is.
Yes.
On several occasions, if we were to look at what the voters have endorsed for us, it's well above what it currently is. And we've been able to keep it lower as we all want, so that's good history.
Correct, correct. And you've been able to manage it too, you've been very aggressive about refinancing, so every time there's an opportunity to save money, you know, and that all helps as well.
So, did I have any questions yet for Jennifer? I guess a question that I've got that, that I don't really need, but I'm curious about is in past, when you've come and worked shop with us, you said, okay, that's if we max out and did 23 cents, we could get 150 million, if you did 20 cents, you could get whatever. So I guess my question to you is
I think I know what you're going to say.
if we were going to max that out, what's our, what's our ceiling? What's the cap using the historical number approximate? Not, I don't want you to work us on that thing, I'm not interested in that.
No, we're in it.
What I want is to not get to there, but I'm curious what the ceiling is now, because we've been thinking that 150 was, but it's not.
If we were to max it out with the second set of assumptions, what we're calling the
Is historical or real, unused realistic?
Realistic, realistic assumptions. Your capacity with 23 cents, which would be maxing it out, would be 174 million.
We might write that note, and if it was 20 cents, it would be?
158 million. And just as a reminder again, I know the board knows this, but for everyone as well, you can vote 300 million. You know, if the board chooses to do so, you can only issue what you can issue on the 50 cent test. So even if our assumptions under the
No, no, we couldn't. We might, we might could legally.
Legally, yes, legally. But what is you, you can only issue what you can pass on the 50 cent test at a time, which I know is hard for the community to understand, but you'd never go over
Well, not, we would, could, thank you, Dan, I appreciate you doing that, helps me to have visuals up there. So, so the good news is, we've been working off of the cost, what Jared tried to get into, that how are we going to be able to afford this and can we afford it? The good news is we're below 20 cents, well below 20 cents, and have plenty of capacity left. Using what I'm going to call three conservative assumptions. One, interest rates based on historical, but, but conservative appropriately to, because we don't have the variables. The second, the taxable value increase at two and a half percent for the next four years, which is conservative based on historical. And EDA dropping off, or same statement. So all three of those, if we could get any one of those in our favor, then it's even better.
Correct, assuming the other two don't go the opposite way, but yes, correct, yeah. There's still, none of them are reversed.
But there's three major variables that are built in at a conservative approach to give us a realistic view of what our taxable impact, tax impact would be. Okay, do I have any questions? That's, that helps us get started, thank you, appreciate that. Jared, your turn. Now what do we, so, so our, our second question is, how much can, are we, Dan, our number two question up there somewhere in is, how much is, are we willing, I don't know what the question is, but it's what, what's the cost of our bond, our bond program maybe? Make sense? What's the cost? I don't know how to word it. What's the cost of what we need? What's the cost of what we need, maybe that's it?
We're going to kind of touch on some of that here.
Great.
So in, in front of you, I did put two handouts for you. One is an A and F by 11, and this relates directly to the questions that are on tonight's agenda. And then underneath there are little lighter questions, and those relate to the presentation that I'm about to get to be able to help support the decisions that you may make this evening. But really focused on, one is the elementary school site and cost. Two is the delivery method for the elementary school and the high school. And the last one is moving into schematic design, which is really focused on the program for the high school, the cost for the high school, and then the schedule for the high school as well. So we've got, the other handout is a copy of these slides, and right now I did present them three up with some notes areas, so feel free to this is information that we've covered before in the previous meetings, so we're really recapping at this point.
That one's way down at the bottom.
Okay, sorry. I thought, I thought that look was
I'm sorry, no. Hold up, hold up on that. That was way down the road. Some other questions that he's going to get to here real quick.
Okay, so, so tonight, what we wanted to do is really have the opportunity for discussion with y'all, is we've covered a lot of this information before, and so I'm going to hit it at a pretty high level as we move through here, but, you know, hit the important parts and really have the opportunity for y'all to discuss amongst yourselves, ask me questions or ask Rebecca questions here as we go through the details. So then the first item that we really wanted
This really is a review, we did this a couple of weeks ago, and Rebecca helped us kind of walk through a lot of details on this. Amanda wasn't with us, but I think she was able to see the stuff, so thank you for giving the benefit, walking back through so we can have our decision points.
Absolutely.
Very clear on this.
So with the, with the elementary school site, we did want to start off with, why are we considering this? And what are the, why it's important for location, that really starts with the growth. And so what you'll see is Chisholm Trail Elementary School and Joe Pearl Elementary School. And they're this yellow in the 17, 18 school year, which means that they're reaching capacity. So that's the elementary school that's relatively on the north side and, and on the southern side as well. Y'all have also noticed that Leon Heights as well hits that yellow category pretty early on. But if you look at a percentage difference, it remains relatively flat throughout, but it is a consideration as it is over capacity in that scenario. So we need to be thinking in terms of location about how these school sites are going to impact the demographics. So we did look at the various sites. You see a map here on the right, as well as you have the maps we looked at last time here on the boards. Basically, the little black dots represent the existing school sites, and the colored dots represent each one of the six elementary school sites that we evaluated. Actually, there's five there. We talked a little bit about Leon Heights, but determined that from a timeline standpoint, that that wasn't feasible within there. We went over the, the school sites, two of them are within the city of Temple, three of them are within Belton. And then we have the appropriate acreage there on the right side. So generally, an elementary school, we're looking at about the 15 acres. And we have some comments there on Second Avenue about the balance between what's used for the agricultural center and what would be used for the elementary schools. And then on the Shanklin Road site that has the opportunity for additional facilities in the future. On the case of all of these, they are all very suitable elementary school sites. What we really looked at is what is the condition today? If you told me, go build a school tomorrow, what would we have to do to get there? If you asked me again in a year as development continues, or you asked me again in five years, how we looked at these would change because development in the ISD would change over time. So we started with North Gate, so this is the northernmost site. And one of the challenges, the two major challenges of the site as it stands today is, one is road access. Is right now, the primary access would be here along the northern edge. However, in the future, there's discussion about adding a main collector going into the roadside, as well as potential future developer adding another adjacent road on the east side of the site, which would really improve access to the site. Right now, based on today, we are showing a single entrance, but as that continues to develop, roads continue to develop, or we plan for the future, that could be planned in there that it will connect to those future collectors and arterials there in the area. The other challenge is, right now, there aren't a lot of services from water and wastewater in the area. So potentially, if you told me, asked me today, I would have to extend those services to the property line from there. So that's North Gate. Poison Oak, so this is located on the southern end of the property, southern end of the district, has adjacent development, adjacent to what you see here, which is all in place. And there are some additional improvements that are being talked about immediately, but I think from a beneficial standpoint, is one, this directly impacts one of the high-growth areas in the, from identified in the demographic study. We have utilities that are adjacent to the property that are easily accessible, and has roadways that are easily accessible. In the workshop last time, we did discuss about, you know, what is the importance here of Poison Oak Road and adjacent collectors and how you would actually access the site. We tweaked the plan a little bit based on some of that input, but really, again, this is just a graphic to indicate, hey, we can fit an elementary school on here with some parking and roads, and there's a whole discussion that needs to happen with the district about what is the proper way to orientate and locate the building on there. That's Poison Oak. Second Avenue site, so this is Second Avenue right here, this is Loop 121 here on the right side, or on the left side. And right now, what we've done is shown a conceptual layout. Last time, we identified two layouts, a one-story concept and a two-story concept. This layout in particular is showing the two-story concept, where the entire development is west of the easement for the power line, which is the area indicated in red. You can see the agricultural center here. And the primary challenge with this one is that Second Avenue is actually in the, is a tech stock right of way. So we would need to add some decelerations, deceleration and turning lanes on that property to be able to access the site. And so right now, we're envisioning one entrance here, a second entrance off the site, but overall, again, there were some challenges, there will be some challenges with topography and those kind of things on the site, but nothing insurmountable on that. As we look at Hubbard Branch, this one is similar in North Gate in terms of status. As you can see right now, you have the main road here, but the actual property sits back. Their planned developed lots here in the center, and this has been on the docket with the city as far as getting that platted and zoned for the residential, but kind of hasn't made steps forward. We're not exactly sure of the timeline, we hear maybe somewhere in the five-year timeframe, to be determined going through there. But this one as well, if you started to say, we would need to build access roads here and here, along with connecting utilities, because they're not directly adjacent to the property. And then finally, Shanklin Road site, so we have Loop 121 Road here that extends up, goes all the way up to the high school eventually. And right now, you can really determine by the scale, that building is the same size building as all the other ones, it just looks really tiny because this is 100 acres. Really, right now, we just kind of located it here in the southeast corner of the site. There are utilities that would service the area right now, but there could be challenges with the existing roadway just in terms of quality of as it stands today. That it's not an improved road that we're seeing here in the area, but overall, another good site for future development of the district. And overall, as we looked at the elementary school sites, what we did is, is generate unweighted ranking. So we didn't weight demographics higher than adjacent C, higher than off-site cost, but gave EDA one, and then kind of gave plus one or plus two based on the actual improvements that would require or available along the way, and then total those at the right. So ultimately, it came up with our, our top three selections would have been Poison Oak, Hubbard Branch, or sorry, Poison Oak, Second Avenue and Shanklin Road would be the top three road sites in there. And, you know, it's a relative scale, so
And those, and some of those numbers are available, I guess, but
Yes, absolutely.
But based on that. We, we talked about that. And you addressed some of the, it's today versus what it would be in two years from now, when we would actually open it, but so I guess one of the, we talked around this quite a bit at our last workshop meeting, and Amanda won't make sure and bring you speed included on that one. The two big issues that seem to play out the most, we had Bob Templeton here with Templeton Demographics and talking about attendance zones.
Yep.
And so the two big issues that Bob and Jared kind of walked, and Rebecca walked us through were cost to develop the site, what would the cost to build a school on this site? And the second being disruption to attendance zones, understanding that anytime we add a new school, we're going to add, we're going to change attendance zones. So what is the, what is the cost, obviously, is a, is a major driver in our decision, but what are, what's the attendance zone impact is the other big decision point. And based on that discussion, it seemed that we were moving towards a consensus that the Poison Oak site was the best cost, least disruptive to attendance zone site of our available sites. Knowing that none, none of the sites are perfect, none of them give us exactly what we might want, but it was the best. Is that a fair assumption? Based on what everybody else was thinking? I should sort of
It puts you at, your Poison Oak allows you to be close, close to one of your highest enrollment schools, one of the schools that has the least capacity. Our, one of our largest elementary schools.
Yeah, it kept coming back to the more central
The central district.
of the locations available, available, the more centralized.
Understanding where we're going to have to shift attendance zones and for buses and transportation for car drivers.
Would we be able to help the Chisholm Trail increase?
Yeah, Bob's answer to that, we have specific ones, and how would you do that? I guess you might talk about this, because y'all addressed those.
Well, you have to, you have to start shifting them all over to do that some, and so we would have, we would have to work through some maps to
Yes.
make that happen.
We're in Sparta.
But Sparta and Leon Heights could send some students north to Poison Oak, which could pull off a hurdle.
Some of the Chisholm that you said.
And then you start bringing up room at Sparta to shift around, and so
But you felt more of our growth was going that way, and we
Northern side.
He said in the future, where we're going to have is our growth in the north, growth in the south, and if we have the ability, we'd build one in the north, one in the south right now.
Yes.
But since we can only build one, what I did was put it in the middle and draw in. He basically said if we were to use, and use these examples to use the North Gate side or the Shanklin side, we would skew our attendance zones so significantly, it would cause a greater disruption to our current attendance zones and
Well, I'd go to the Chisholm.
in that, for the next five years.
A lot of them went to Sparta.
Exactly, so, so that was why we kind of narrowed back into the, to the middle two, and then it was, came down to the cost, again, back to the cost issue. That Poison Oak was a more cost-effective, there's still some interest about how do you, where you set that in the site of the school and access off of Poison Oak and versus the, what's the name of that road?
Bridgewater.
Bridgewater, not, Bridgewater. And how, how best to access it, but, but that's, that's to consider. So really, we're at the point, and I should have said this earlier, but Jason is, is not anticipating in the school site selection at his discretion, his disclosure statement that he submitted, but, but we need to come to some conclusion. It is on our agenda in our regular meeting to decide this, this is one of our decision points, but is there, are there questions as we, before we move forward? Is that one that we're feeling pretty convinced of that's the right decision?
Well, the only other option would have been, in the center there would have been a Second Avenue side, and that was going to cost us
It's not logical.
Was it one, one million to one, one to 1.5 more? We hadn't estimated that ourselves, but the previous team had looked at a million.
I think when the timing is right for that location, it will all naturally work out with Tech Dot, I think right now
It's a beautiful site, it's going to be a site for a beautiful school, but it's
And one day, they'll get on board with that whole area, I just believe it.
The city and Tech Dot are certainly going to have to support that site development
I agree.
for that to be, be affordable, frankly, from that standpoint. So I'm going to, I'm going to, are we pretty comfortable with, we're prepared to make a decision on ES 11 site as the Poison Oak site? That'll be later when I'm taking action now, but is there any question about, any more question for Jared or Susan or anybody? Okay, good. Check that one off, we don't need to revisit that one. Well, just, just that, we haven't taken action, but we don't need to revisit that one at this point.
So then the, the other part that we discussed last time, just in, something coming up, we didn't actually go over this content, was about the cost of an elementary school and how that plays forward. So very much like the high school, we've started looking at all the kind of the buckets that go into this, from the hard costs that you would pay a construction manager or contractor, all the way through getting furniture in there, computers, geotechnical testing, those kind of things. And one of the important things is, is you go out and, and I'll say it's very hard to compare apples to apples as you go out in the industry, because everybody kind of uses a different number. But what you'll see is, for example, this number right here is about $16 million, when we went back and looked at the Belton schools, Chisholm Trail, or Chisholm Trail, Pearl and High Point. And you appreciate those based on the actual inflation incurred, they pretty much came out to that number there. We additionally looked at things going around in the industry, schools that we're working on, and they're really coming in through that amount. So right now, what we're talking about is the total project cost for 2018, including inflation, what we would plan for right now, is 21.3 million dollars.
So in the, what we've been looking at in all So, in the, what we've been looking at in all the workshop stuff before has been kind of a range and independent, and this is in between the 17 and 24 you've given us, which is really what we expected based on the feedback we got in our last session. I, I appreciate the detail that you put into this, but the question is, I think this fits what I've been hearing for some area in the central business area, what people are having to face for this size of a school, but this, this is pretty par for the course, isn't it?
And par for the course, indeed.
So that is the going rate at a school, but this isn't actually to open until 2019.
Correct.
So, we would do construction in 2018.
Correct. So, it's basically.
We're projecting out, but, but that's basically the going rate today on bids, from what I've seen.
The, the light gray numbers are the going rate today for bids.
But you're comfortable with going with that to get the bids in here?
So, part of what we have, and you'll see, there's a project contingency as well as an inflation contingency in there.
What's, is the inflation contingency built into project?
Yeah, it is in the total estimated project cost.
I was going to ask you, how do you, you know, we had, in the past, when we've done bond issue, contingency's always been a need, curious, how do you decide, is it a percentage is it, how do you determine how much of a contingency we need? That's about, what, three and a half percent?
Uh, right now, the project contingency is 5%, and then we appreciate the total project cost from there, 5% per year. So, roughly speaking, we have 15% of inflation and project contingency moving forward. So, depending upon what the marketplace.
Of the hard costs.
Of the whole project. So, there's a couple, just for Excel, there are a couple cells that are not shown in here that we could communicate if you would want, that there's an inflation line item in there. I can tell you what that is.
No, that's fine, I'm, I'm just, let's be doing the math wrong, I think 789.
789 is 5% of the 15.7, like you're saying.
Yes, this is 5% of that, but then you told.
If there's another, yeah.
I'm, I'm saying, of the total cost, though, of the total bond pack, of 21.3 million, either less than 800,000 of it is contingency.
Project contingency. There's an inflation contingency that's not identified in those line items.
But it is included in 21.3.
Yes, sir.
So you subtract all that, yeah.
Thank you, that, that's.
We're going to make 15% built in there.
So that's, that means that, so, so there's.
40 million right now, 21.3.
Okay, that's good, that, that's good, that means that those are today, the gray are today's costs, so a year from now, with inflation or who knows.
Probably another 800,000.
We built in some contingency on that, so there's a little bit of, of, what we don't want to do is.
That's a number of like 19 million.
Here it goes.
Right.
2018 is 21 million.
And this is the same-sized school that we are, we've been building, this 800,000.
Correct, yeah, this is matching the three schools, our recent, last three schools.
Yes, sir.
Size-wise.
Size, construction, everywhere, mechanical systems.
Well, that's one of the things, okay, Deanna, help me, if you could draw a line through that other, I think, rather than starting a whole new paper.
Which one?
On the right side paper, on the right, draw a line across it, just use the bottom half of that page to start adding up total product, total bond program cost, because this is the first, this is the first one in there, right?
Yes, sir.
So, 21.3, round it off?
That's correct.
Okay, are we comfortable with that? That's another question point I wanted to just make sure, are we, we comfortable with that, with that contingency explanation? Construction guys, are y'all comfortable with that?
When would this actually be?
In 2018. So, right now, we're, the tentative schedule, and we do have schedule up here, is that we would finish the documents in the late first quarter, early second quarter of 2018. That would give you about 15 months to build the building, so it would open roughly June, May, June of 2019. Because you want time to be able to move in and get furniture in and get principal hover there.
Yeah, we need that school by June. We do not want to wait till August like the last time.
Yeah.
Right, Calvin?
We want to move in.
But that was a little, went hell and crazy.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that, sorry, asking you to do that and having to notice it.
That's fine.
So, we're, are we comfortable, is our consensus, we're comfortable with the project program costs of including that in our bond program? This is a need, we've talked about enrollment growth, the need for opening on, in 2019, and that program cost is what we'll start with building in. Without objection, we'll check that box. Thank you.
So, then we were asked to kind of rewind a little bit to something we had presented in September of 2015, and this is before we started the CTE project, but really where that had its genesis.
Let me give a little context to that.
Yes.
We, for, for Jeff.
Yeah, I was just fixing to tell him.
We had talked about several capital projects in the district for a while, and the board asked us to work on some schematic designs with some rough estimates so that we could prioritize those and as funds become available, start working on that list. And so, this was the list that we heard from the board and things that we knew were priority for us in the future, or board requests, and so, we ended up with this list of projects. There's actually a packet that goes with this that explains each project and the estimated cost. So, if you have any questions about any of those projects, we could speak to that or get you that information later.
We actually have done, are, are doing some of the CTE projects.
We are, so we started with the automotive tech project, we also identified the parking, gymnasium demolition and parking construction, which we have not begun because we ran into an issue with moving a program and part of the facility that would be demolished, and so, we've had to work through that, and that slowed us down a little bit. But there were two projects on the list that I asked Jared to highlight for us this evening that I think could be potential additions to our bond program, one being the Lakewood Elementary Music Classroom and Gymnasium addition, and then the other, the upgrades of the, and modernization of the auditorium that sits right here on Wall Street by the administration building, so I'll pass it back to you.
Well, can I insert one thing in there? This one, back, there's a note on there about the Sparta, back in 12 years ago, 11, 12 years ago, when we did Sparta, we said, we're going to do this at, like, we're going to do this at all of our larger elementary schools, and we did the Sparta one, and we have never been able to plug, plug this in. We keep saying, the next bond issue, we'll plug that in, the next bond issue, we'll plug that in. And so, it's the one school that we haven't gotten to.
Lakewood would be one of our larger elementary campuses that does not have a, a.
Oh, yes.
General, a gymnasium of the same.
We, we have agreed to put it up there.
Quality that you would have in our new schools.
So, this just brings up ours with Sparta and the newer ones that have been built since then.
It would be the next school if you were to look on sizes, like what would be next?
Well, it's the only one of our larger, our large schools that doesn't have the gym and music enclosed.
Yes.
Okay, that's like history. So, we've talked about this multiple times over the years, and in fact, when we did Sparta, I was like, well, you know, why didn't we do the same, well, afford it, and we'd get frightened, find a way when we could afford this, so.
And so, basically, what we were looking at doing is matching what was done at Sparta Elementary School, basically gymnasium to music rooms, we have storage in the office, and, you know, really, that's just a conceptual layout. We would then meet with the staff and really talk about where does it want to go on the site, how do you access it, you know, think about current safety and security concerns, how do we get it all under one roof that we'd look at. We have gone onsite to kind of think about some locations, but beyond that, you know, this is really the point that we're at, and same process that we've gone through in terms of the total facility size through the cost, and ultimately, we'd be looking at the total project cost of about 1.7 million for a new gymnasium and music classroom addition at Lakewood Gym.
And again, I'm just gonna, I've already kind of said this, I guess, or applied it, but we have talked about this so many times in my time around the board, that if there's any way we can do this, I would sure like to see this included. I, I just think it's overdue and needed, it's such a neat area. Those portables are getting older and older, and, and the one other thing, we didn't add on there, when we did the, several years ago, when we had the plan to remove portables and replace port, we didn't do the Lakewood ones, we said, oh, we're gonna, let's hold on, not replace them because we want to do this, well, they're three years older now, they're two years older now, even though that, and so. Right, we needed them, but we didn't want to replace them.
Yes.
Because we knew we'd do this permanent facility, so all those signs, it's time, if we can afford it, and that's the question that I'm interested in getting to on this one.
What's our cost on, what, the auto technology, how big, how big is it and what, when did it cost? That's the most recent. Roughly 1.1 million, and it's about 5,000, 5,500 square feet, plus the construction technology bay, which was another 1,500 square feet. Both of them were pre-engineered metal buildings. So, this, basically, we're kind of there with a little bit, with finish upgrades, those kind of things. So, our cost, which we're both pretty close to that or similar?
But this isn't a metal building, this is.
No, we can do a conventional still frame, yeah.
Right.
Or load-bearing block, we can go through those.
Some more, more like what we did at Sparta.
Yes. Right, Rick?
Okay, so this is going to be a decision point. You got me. Okay, so that's, that's a 1.7.
Potential.
Potential. Would you, you, would you write that on there with a question mark? I don't know, we decided this one, we have to get to the end of this before we can decide these.
And so, then the other project we were asked to highlight was, when we went through all those projects, we did go tour through several of the campuses, campuses and facilities. One in particular was the auditorium that's here on the main administration site, it is vintage, kind of 1940s, 1950s.
Vintage, that's what I put it.
And so, basically, we, we were asked to, what would it cost to refresh this facility? And so, we looked at, at four angles, which is really kind of freshen up the interior finishes. Right now, you have the popcorn ceiling on the entry, you see some of the staining on the inside of the tiles, replace the floor, the BCT's coming up in a couple places of the interior finishes, looking at upgrading the electrical, mechanical and plumbing fixture systems, predominantly the mechanical systems, that those were a little challenge on that side. Replace all the auditorium seats and then provide some accessible, accessible, access that is accessible into the facility. Right now, if you park at that lower lot, there's not a, an actual route to get to the auditorium facility. And so, that one, very similar in total cost, we've gone through all those square footages, that that one's about 1.1 million dollars to refresh that facility.
What is the seating at the PAC?
It's about 850 students.
I was thinking, this was closer to that.
No, that's, that says 300, I thought it was more than that.
It is.
It's more than that. I think it's, I think it's close to 500.
It could be, this facility is a facility that's underutilized because of the condition that it's in, but it has the potential to be used a lot by all, by everyone in the district. It can be used for elementary programs, it can be used for staff development and informational sessions, I think every, every department and campus could benefit from the use of this facility. It's got great parking all around it, it's a great size, it just is outdated and it needs to be modernized, so.
Amanda, I think you're right, I think the size of that's.
I thought it was a larger, probably, I would guess.
But I do think it would be very attractive for even like elementary events, plays.
It probably has 500, 500 seats in there, I know we've had the.
I mean, I've even looked at renting it before, but it didn't have the, the speaker system that I needed, so I couldn't use it for what I needed because I couldn't plug it in.
We had all of new tech there.
Was that what?
All of new tech.
Yeah. The, oh, that's a good point, we put the entire capacity of new tech in there and it wasn't full, so that's an indication, it'd probably seat 700.
That's a very, it's a nice, it's a nice space.
Plus visitors.
Right, it's a nice space, it's a very nice space.
It's probably 700, 800 then, based on, based on mine, so, so that's another one that's an overdue, and I appreciate you bringing that up. How many seats would it end up being with new seating?
We, we would match, I was trying to see if I had my notes on.
Oh, that's okay.
But Deanna's right, we just had an event there that had six or 700 people and it wasn't full, so take that for whatever's worth of account. Okay, those are the two projects that are, that are recommended for consideration.
Those would be the two that I would recommend on that list that we could send or.
Okay. Okay, the comments, questions, we'll come back to these and revisit these when we get into total enough, though, let's get to the high school, because that's the big one, right?
Okay, so the high school, we were asked to do a couple things. The first that we were asked is, this is the original graph that we showed, the, based on the growth in the district and kind of what's happening in the future, is, is we wanted to ask ourselves when we started this, is, we have BISD 2025, which takes us through the next 10 years, but what's occurring after that, and is there something that we need to be conservative of? So, in this model, you'll see, and I've added a couple notes here at the bottom, is that we've added the percentage, the assumed percentage growth there at the bottom, and that's basically taking the average of these 10 years and carrying that forward from 2026 through 2045 of what's happening over that 30 years. And so, each year, you increment just a little bit more. And then, what we actually did, what, after talking with Mr. Templeton, he said, instead of seeing a percentage growth, you would, you would see a consistent growth. So, this is a fixed growth model, so basically, we took the average over the 10 years in students and added that, so it's a difference of 150 students roughly per year less. And so, what you see is, is it changes the number of years in terms of when you need the elementary, middle school and high school, so we go from four and a half to six, and at the high school, eleven and a half to 17. In the long term, what you do see is, the way I would in my mind is, you have four dots here, or five dots along the top row, and this one, you have six dots along the top row, so this one's a little bit more aggressive, this one's a little bit more conservative.
And I really appreciate you doing that based on the feedback we got from Bob at our last meeting, but the reality is, we don't know, and there's no way to project that, but it's probably somewhere in the middle of those, probably, but that actually is very helpful to me to have a range, to say, it's somewhere, we're going to build a new high school in 12 to 17 years, and four to six, five, five and a half, so you, are y'all sure now when your reelection year? So, so when is third high school come on? Yeah, that, so that's really very helpful, and I think it's important for us to continue to be looking out, not just at this current roadmap to 2025, but what's the next beyond that. So, I, I very much appreciated this chart, and I, and I appreciate this additional chart that kind of helps stretch it out in a little different model, but it still says the same thing, we are going to continue to grow, and we have to have capacity. So, as Jennifer said, the good news is, we're going to have capacity if we grow and if we need it, right? So, this, this actually helps us know that if we don't have the growth, we don't get the schools, then it's all a bit of a point, but that's unlikely based on what the, they tell us. Great, okay, so.
So, no decisions out of that one, just the information?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, there wasn't anything we needed to decide.
So, the next two items that we're going to touch are program, which I, I say is square footage, and then the other is cost, which comes down to first cost. And so, the, the two issues are linked very strongly, because one multiplies the other to get your total concern, so they work in tandem going through there. So, we're going to, we're covering each one individually, but then you'll see the summary at the end when we get to cost, we see the implications of those and the implication of the timeframe going through there. So, what we started, what we wanted to do is go back to, we've been presenting four options at this point, A, B, C, D, that really kind of highlight the various difference, high-level summaries, is, basically, as we went through these options, we made very strategic cuts to each one of the program along the way, just reducing a little bit each along the way. And it's not until D that we actually having to start making some significant cuts, like no auditorium, those kind of things that, that are, are much harder choices going through there. The other part is, you'll see that in the core, and Rebecca will get into this, is you'll see that we've got 2,500 student core on A and B, but that starts reducing along with classroom capacity as we get further down.
So, so really, one of our first, one of our decision points is compact student packs, I want to make, so let's put that in there, and, and to summarize again, what we did last time was, we were debating the 1,600, that helped us long enough, that, that certainly didn't get us there, so we were debating the 2,000 or 2,500 numbers of what got us there, and I kind of heard a consensus that 2,000 doesn't, we'd be turning right around and adding the next 500 on pretty quick. That was a conclusion that we seemed to get to at our last meeting, is that?
We gained 300 kids a year, so it doesn't take long.
It didn't take long to, to max that out and say, we're going to be adding at a higher cost, is that what y'all were concluding to? So, really, I'm, I'm jumping ahead of you, I know, but we kind of had this discussion, so I wanted to kind of start with where we ended.
Well, that's kind of where we left it, the way I remember it, we didn't really set.
No, we didn't, but.
The size of schools that we wanted. That's assuming that we were have two six eight schools versus.
Assuming we're going to build another twenty, another large school.
That's the equity, mom.
We talked about all of them.
Okay, go ahead.
So with that, we thought we would hit the highlights of A, B, C, D, which again, this is about the square footage. So you'll see the total there at the bottom right of the total square footage and how it's broken down. And then on the left side are kind of the descriptive of, on A is where we're at. And then as you go through B, C, D, you'll start seeing where we've started making cuts along the way. And some of those cuts fall in two categories. Ones are easy to add, like if we reduce the number of classrooms, you can add classrooms later. But if you reduce the size of the classroom, we can't go around to twenty classrooms and make them, increase them from eight hundred to eight fifty. And you'll see that as we move forward.
All right, well, we have, just to recap, we have four options, A, B, C and D. And we started the process on trying to determine how big does this twenty-five hundred student school need to be by taking a tour through several, through five schools. And then we also had user group meetings where we sat down with, with staff for two and a half days and visited with the science teachers and the athletic group and admin and all these, these different disciplines. And so option A was really reflective of all of those conversations and what they thought would be appropriate for, to be in, in the Belton High School. And this one has, I'm not gonna go through a ton of detail, but kind of hitting some highlights. This one has career technology programs, there are thirty-five rooms. Auditorium seating for six hundred, three lunch periods. And gym seating for fifteen hundred, auxiliary, gym seating for five hundred, and thirty-five percent circulation and support. And what that just means is that there's a, we assign a percentage for, for hallways and collaborative spaces and those types of spaces. And you'll see that option A and B holds that thirty-five percent. And then options C and D, they start getting smaller. Also, one thing to note too is that in options A and B, the classrooms are eight hundred and fifty square feet. As we go, get into options C and D, they start getting smaller. That was one of the items, like Jared mentioned, once you build a classroom that's a certain size, it's there. It's not something that you can really make bigger later.
Question.
Yes.
And all of these options, how does the existing, our existing high school compare to these options? Where do we sit, where does Belton High School sit now?
Belton High School, we decided would probably be a B.
Yeah, so we said that option A, we went on a tour, this would be most like Tom Glenn in terms of the tour. Option B was kind of a combination between Tom Glenn and Belton High School. Option C leaned a little bit more heavily on Belton High School. And it's hard to give an apples to apples comparison that way.
We have different, different building over there, it's been built in phases. And so our more recent construction has bigger classrooms than our, than our older classrooms.
Right, you can see that difference when you walk through with students in the classroom.
Right.
Our science, our new science wings, for example, are bigger sized classrooms.
A and B offer more opportunities for what we call twenty-first century learning opportunities that it was more like.
So we've been adding on to.
Like the lab, exactly. And so that's why it's a, it's a little bit of a blend of B and C somewhere in there. Because C also cuts the square footage, which Belton has plenty, and Dalton High School has plenty.
Right. And I, and I think of all of the schools that we toured, that the, the amount of CTE programs at Belton was, was higher than most of the schools that we toured.
Oh.
Okay, option B, the main difference between option A and B is that there is no maker space room in option B. That was a, a space that was identified for kind of a multipurpose room that could be used for maker space projects, robotics, that types of thing. There were some collaborative areas that were reduced and the dining size was reduced. So that may mean that it's just a little tighter seating arrangement than you have in option A. Also, then the number of CTE programs, twenty-seven versus thirty-five in option A. Option C, option C starts getting tighter. It has a floor of twenty-five hundred students, but only classrooms for two thousand. And then this is the first one, the size of the classroom gets smaller. It has eight hundred class, square feet per classroom instead of eight fifty. It also, we started getting into actually reducing other spaces. The dining was reduced further, the library a little bit more. Options A, B and C all had think tanks, which were teachers' work areas, office and work areas that supported the different areas in the school. Those started getting smaller, the science rooms a bit smaller. Some of the number of music practice rooms were reduced. And the gym seating bumps from fifteen hundred down to twelve hundred. Auxiliary seating from five hundred to three hundred. And auditorium seating down to four hundred. And then the, the dining gets a little bit smaller and so you have four, that would be four periods of lunches instead of three. Like options A and B had three periods.
What do we have now, do you know?
For lunches, we're at three this year, but remember we have the nine period.
Has its own.
So we actually have additional, have period space that we, that we're using.
And our gym seats, how many now?
Um, I don't remember.
What else in it? You redid that?
Can't remember either.
Fifteen hundred.
It's twelve, twelve fifteen in it, yeah.
Sorry, stop, I gotta see it to understand.
It's big, yeah.
And CTE rooms now, we have.
We, um.
I know they're dispersed across the whole district, but.
They're dispersed across the campus and I don't know the total number.
On campus, yeah, because right now it's, it's close to the forty-five because we based it off the, the program off of that.
The thirty-five, based on option A, is more comparable to what we have currently.
One of the themes I'm hearing in the questions is how we want to make sure we have comparable schools.
It's also twenty million dollar difference and it.
Exactly.
At least we, that's a big decision.
And so the way that we phrase this, so option C would be the first one, so A and B are kind of standalone facilities.
Yes.
Option C is, we're gonna build three quarters of a high school, is the way that I'd phrase it. And then we, there would be a future phase, it would take the capacity from two thousand students to twenty-five hundred students.
Oh, I see what you stood there, I didn't, I didn't recognize that on that.
Yeah. And the question, that was the, what we got into considerable discussion, but a lot of time on is, how long would it be before we have to do that? And would we want to do that? Do we want equal sized high schools? So those two kind of questions. It wouldn't take very long, was, was the answer to the first one and the second one we didn't resolve, I guess. Okay.
Right. So yeah, just recapping on student number for classrooms, A and B, twenty-five hundred, C, two thousand, and D, sixteen hundred, which takes us to option D. And this one was, we had, we talked about the core, which is like the dining room would support X number of students and the library would support X number of students. On option D, we were looking at the twenty-five hundred student library. So the building of, of library that would ultimately handle twenty-five hundred students, but only sixteen hundred students for the dining. Also, you see the, the classrooms are getting smaller, they're at seven hundred and fifty square feet. We started out at eight fifty and went to eight hundred and these are seven fifty. The number of CTE rooms dropped to twenty. There's no auditorium with this one. The dining room, four lunch periods, the gym seating at twelve hundred. And the auxiliary gym was, there is not one.
Taken away.
Taken away, right. And then the circulation at twenty-eight percent, which is, you're getting down to just kind of minimal hallways instead of areas, yeah, that provide the collaborative spaces. And, and then we started, in addition to all that, we started taking the, the spaces down a little, reducing them a little bit further in square foot and took the weight room out. And, so the highlights. And this is just a, a recap of, of what we just went through. You can see it comparatively.
Okay, so what's the cost?
So in terms of cost, and as we looked at budget, same kind of graphic that we saw for the elementary school, we start looking at the total square footage that we built. Right now, we, in this scenario, we've assumed the dollar amount of two twenty-five and I'll show you the options for the other versions through here. And then basically, that runs through. And so these are the options that we had originally presented, that A through D would be somewhere between seventy-eight million and a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. And so that's, these numbers right here, you'll see, the seventy-eight million and a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. And that is assuming A through D, two twenty-five. And what all ways, there's, there's two things that I want to consider on this slide is, one is the cost per facility. So this is a very minimal first cost facility. There are choices that have to be made in terms of the design, the systems, that you may end up with systems that need to be replaced in there.
Long-term maintenance, operating costs.
Exactly. And then here's what you saw that's kind of more equitable with what we're seeing in the industry between there. So last time, and we'll get into this next, this kind of work shadowing is, you'll see it on the left, it says twenty nineteen. If you go down, that says twenty eighteen. So basically, these are deducting five percent off of that number to get to that cost, so.
So, so what we, and this goes back to the very first question, for us to back up to a May election, back up six months, gives us a year into the building earlier and saves us five percent cost.
Correct.
So we can go cheaper or more square footage or a combination thereof.
Yeah.
When it pulls down, so if we back up to May, we can get A for the price of B.
B. That's a great way to say it.
Or we can get B and knock off a few more things off of our, as our wish list. I just, we're talking twenty thousand square feet of flex space for me with option A and B. Am I understanding this correct?
It's CTE space as well.
Well, it's a couple, you're right, it is, but it says main entry, study areas and no marketplace.
And I believe the, the CTE programs went from thirty-five to twenty-seven.
They did, we like a science classroom and a twenty-seven, and that's why, but did I not, are we not still gonna have to combine some of those programs anyway? Where like the auto tech, were we building a whole new auto tech?
No.
We weren't. So some of those CTE courses could come off because they will have to transport in.
I don't think they include things like auto tech and health sciences and things that are off-site already.
But needing thirty-five classrooms of that versus twenty-seven classrooms of that, could we logistically lose twenty thousand in square foot, save six million dollars and knock a few more things off of our wish list?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That cover the rest of the district as a whole.
The question that I asked back is, it seems as though, and we even have on our agenda later this evening, to add CTE courses, that is the trend, that is where we're going to add courses, options.
It is, but not every, not every course is specialized.
Exactly.
So they can share with them.
So shared space, common spaces.
So the A is the ideal, right? If we can have every space we would want, it would be A.
We can, but I, I, I agree. I just think six million dollars is a lot of money to be able to accommodate other things within our district that we might need to take care of too.
So, so, well, keep walking us through, because I think you're, I, I want, I don't want to miss this.
There may not be a plan.
That's a really key chart.
So, so right now, what we did is, what, what our goal was, is trying to create some major buckets to help facilitate discussion. The board does have discretion if we say, you know, I, we need to be somewhere in the middle that, okay, it's not two twenty-five, it's not two sixty, maybe it's two hundred and forty-five in terms of dollars per square foot. Or if it's not four or five, maybe it's four hundred thousand. You know, we'd knock off a few of the CTE classes, those kind of things. If there is some flexibility in making those decisions, we're trying to give you a framework for those decisions. You'll see kind of this and how that works with the other one, the other numbers here as we.
I think I just jumped on. So back up, back up a slide, and, and so, so we went from the original, what we've been looking at before is that top text in the twenty nineteen book. If we do a May election, we can, that was assuming we'd open in twenty twenty-one.
It's a cost per square foot.
By backing up to a May election, we could open in twenty twenty, so the costs, those are bid years, right? Is that, how that play eighteen to nineteen are bid years?
Yes, yes.
Right. So that lowers the cost five percent. And those are based on the cost per square foot. So those numbers, so if we make that first decision that we're going with a May election, we're, we don't have to look at that top.
We're looking at the bottom now.
We're looking at the bottom.
Yeah, so right here, and so what I've done is inserted a little, a little section right here that falls between two twenty-five and two sixty. So you're asking why it increases, well, it's going from one twenty-one, which is right here.
Okay, that's why, okay, column.
Just adding in.
Actual column.
Yeah, so right now, for example, this would be artificial turf field, chilled water system. Maybe there's tarso, well, maybe we're having to make some decisions, like we're doing conductor heads and downspouts, we're going to sealed concrete. And we're making some first cost choices, which also has some long-term costs that, you know, balancing those two to get to that number.
But in our original scenario that we've been looking at, our best case was in that two hundred and twenty-five on the end. That's where we had kind of, that's what we've been working off of most of the time, right?
Yes.
As far as, just all that comes. We had the dream, which was up here, we had what we didn't want, which was down here. So we had kind of honed in on that.
Which is the bravest slide.
Right, which is not, and when I saw the two forty-five, I was like, where did we just jump here? Now it's interesting.
We're trying to maybe hone in on a tighter number to where.
Of the two issues of cost per square foot and cost and total square foot.
Yes.
So, so other decision pointer, cost and size. Which go together, right?
Yes, so it'd be cost on this one, because student capacity is related to size.
So can you expand on the amenities difference between two twenty-five and two forty-five? What are we, what are we getting?
So that, that's something that we need to have a discussion last time and I can pull those up. It would be systems, like we talked about, is in the two sixty, we usually see that that, that's maybe a topping slab, so you can get a really nice sealed concrete throughout. It's chilled water, a lot of glazing between the classroom and the hallway. So here, we're stepping that down just a little bit between what we said was two twenty-five, which is probably packaged DX units, VCT, maybe, and you may have to go to natural turf fields, those kind of things. And there's some, some balance that we need to have that discussion of, you know, really working this hard about what's the most important thing to Belton? How do we get there? And that's where it's gonna take some, some work to be able to identify exactly what those are.
The new cost per square footage gives us more flexibility to.
Yes.
And it lands between the two.
So, okay, so one, I don't know what to do. So, so one thing Jennifer's told us is, we have capacity up to a hundred and seventy-four. I don't know, I don't want that, but it, but it's out there, which we could do anything. And that wasn't on the table before, interestingly enough, but we probably still don't want to do the top level. But we could, the numbers that we could play with plugging in, I think the total.
Can you, let, let's go through the next section real quick, because I think it'll be relatively quick and we'll get that following. So project schedule, in the December board workshop, we presented three schedules. And we presented a November bond with a twenty twenty-one opening for high school. Scenario number two was a November bond with a twenty twenty opening. The challenge we had identified with that one is the gap in funding right here would be a challenge because that would draw from fund balance to be able to do that. But we wanted to say, would it be possible? So then we really, we ended up on option one and option three. Option three is a May bond with a twenty twenty opening. And so right now, we've been on, been talking about this track, we've introduced this idea. So we went into this idea, what we saw as the benefits were, is one, with the twenty twenty opening of a new high school, we're able to address middle school capacity sooner, a full year sooner, because we're hitting capacity at the middle school level as well. We would need to be cognizant about when the bond sales are. August, according for bond sale this year, would be able to hit that, that funding challenge there. We've been talking about the reduced inflation costs, so you've started seeing where we're drawing that number from when we reduced that square footage, how that savings is. And we talked a little bit about E D A funding and how that might affect the future. And then as well as if you start paying on it sooner, you're building that capacity sooner as well on that side. So that was the scheduled discussion. So then I think too, where, where you were heading.
Which is why I had just, and to add to that, the information Jennifer had given us, I think has made the May decision relatively easy for us, right? Is that a safe assumption that we're, consensus would be that we would be spending a lot more money in November? We delay till November than if we go ahead towards May. Is that up?
Yes.
Everybody in agreement with that?
And the, the three point one million in fund balance use would come back after we.
Yeah, the idea you. Yeah, the idea of you pass a reimbursement resolution, but if you're actually able to sell and get funds in August, that would be much smaller. That was a kind of worst case scenario. Okay, so, thank you. Okay? So then to where you were headed about potential bond scenarios, so what we wanted to do is kind of start seeing how all three of these items could come together, the elementary school, the capital improvement project, and the high school. Uh, and so what we did is develop four bond scenarios, A, B, C, D, which are unrelated to the program size, but right now, actually, they are the program size. Uh, so we've got the elementary school costs, so at twenty-one point three million, the number we identified there. Uh, and then what I did is plugged in the high school size, so A, B, C, D option, at two hundred and forty-five a square foot. And so plug that number in here, and right now, I've got a blank right here for other capital improvement projects, which could be the two that we identified here, or it could be something else that is intended. And so then you see the total bond package amount for really the elementary school and the comprehensive high school.
You said at two forty-five a square foot?
Two forty-five a square foot, yeah. So, as you're considering student capacity and student cost, first cost, that is where these two numbers intersect. So we can replace that number as appropriate, but I thought I'd give you a framework here to start discussions around.
So we, we, uh, we had some discussion last time that, and I don't know if it's changed some, but at that point, we ruled out A and D, because that D didn't meet our needs and D, A seemed just more, we were willing to pay, that's kind of where we were. So the one, there's a lot of variables in here, but the big variable in here is a two thousand versus a two twenty-five hundred student. The core is twenty-five hundred for both, but the, the classroom is two thousand or twenty-five hundred.
Right.
And the question becomes, well, how many years does that buy you, and then what cost does it to add that later? And those go up, and that's where we had considerable discussion about all that stuff. Now, again, you get to how big, do we want a twenty-five hundred student school is one of our questions. Um, and are we going to go ahead and build it now while it's a better, um-
It's affordable.
It's affordable. I, I, I can't say, well, it's more affordable than it would be later. Yes. Do we, do we have this bond scenario, maybe I missed one, I was reading this, this is on the two forty-five per square foot?
Yes.
Do we have the same scenario with the two twenty-five that we've been working off of most of the time?
Uh, so two twenty-five, I don't have this slide.
It'd be ten million less on the fee.
Yeah, it's on, that's just slide, whatever, off the number, where is that?
Forty-five?
Yeah.
So it'd be plus roughly, yeah, twenty-one million on, on top of this right now.
So about ten, about ten million is the difference?
Yeah.
Depending on.
Uh, yeah, it's about ten million.
About ten million.
And those two-
That's seven to be eleven.
To go from two twenty-five to two forty-five, um, so those numbers could be, so that's a good question, you know, do you want to?
Well, all along, we've worked off of the two twenty-five. That, that's been our number that we've, because I go back, we look at the old A and B scenarios, um, and we've used it.
A, we just couldn't afford it.
Right, A is out of the question, because we couldn't afford it, D didn't meet our needs. B and C was comparable to our current situation, and we worked off of two twenty-five. And now we realize, okay, so we're going to back into the number by backing into eighteen, which saves us some. But I don't know that that necessarily means we need to, we make that jump to two forty-five instead of staying at two twenty-five, where we're in a better situation and able to get a little bit more than we thought we were going to get six weeks ago when we were all like, well, that's just out of the question anyways.
So, so there's, so there's two, at least two points here. As I say, one is, do we want the B or C size, two thousand, twenty-five hundred?
Well, the B, I think is what we pretty much determined we had to go with, we didn't buy ourselves any time.
That was our conclusion, that we want the B size, is that right? So the B, is that a, are we, are we in agreement? You're not in agreement with that?
When you add the extra five hundred, it makes sense if you're going to build that school with twenty-five hundred students.
Yeah, rather than delaying.
Unless it's because of building at the beginning, then coming back, maybe you're right, and then building it.
So then the, so then the second question becomes, well, what's, what's included in that site? Um, is it the B or C, this is where it gets confusing, because is it the B level of?
Most, most of that's long-term maintenance calls, B is about square footage. So then it comes down to first cost is what we're at.
First cost, the two twenty-five is the number we, we've worked off of most of the time.
So what would we get if we said, um, let's see if I'm asking the question what you're asking. If we said the twenty-five hundred student school, core and classroom, at the two twenty-five cost, what would we get from that to the two forty-five? What does that extra twenty dollars per foot get us?
Where are we getting?
What's the difference? Using the twenty-five to two hundred students?
So that, that's where we look at, like, mechanical system that we may go from chilled water, which at three hundred and eighty-five thousand, we see a payback sooner with that, but there's an increased first cost. So that's five dollars a square foot, usually is five to ten dollars a square foot between chilled water and DX. Uh, you start looking at-
Two sixty, two twenty-five.
So what is the, okay, so keep going, so those are maintenance costs, so operations costs would be lower? If we spend more, first cost is, I understand you're saying first cost are construction costs, save us in maintenance cost or operating costs?
Correct, as well as we would then also look at items that would impact educational flexibility, so the amount of transparency between the classroom and the corridor, maybe some operable partitions. We would, at two twenty-five, we would have to be very strategic.
So we're going with the quote-unquote add-on extras?
No, we're still getting the, the rooms, the breakups and the, and the, I mean, we're still on the basic plan.
With that twenty dollars a square foot, just giving you extras?
Mechanicals.
So when, when we talk about two twenty-five a square foot, the example facilities that we gave were Westwood High School and Belton High School. And so Belton High School has a couple areas that we've started adding, like, like the library, and those that offer some transparency. Uh, as we go up to the two sixty, granted, I know we're talking two forty-five, that gets you more towards North Belton Middle School. That, that's the type of learning environment that would be available, that, that's the educational impact that we're talking about.
Okay, that helps. So the new areas of Belton High School versus the-
So the new area is the two twenty-five level?
No.
No, no, more towards the two-
Is it fair, fair to say you used two twenty-five because you were working off of an assumption of a very conservative tax rate model? And that was the way to get to, um, the four different options?
Correct. Is that ba- based on the information that we had on the schedule?
Yes.
We backed into those models based on all the information we had been given today.
Yes.
But our new, the additions we've done, or renovations we've done at Belton High School, like for our engineering, our computer science rooms, for our library, some of those areas, that's more like North Belton Middle School model, the higher cost, as opposed to the, some of the older areas or the way Belton High School was, which would be a two twenty-five.
Correct.
And Georgetown Eastview is a?
Uh, Eastview, I think, was, we, was two oh five to two twenty-five range is what we had talked about.
Glenn, uh-
Glenn was the two sixty.
Was the top.
Yeah. So what we've been building was South Belton, North Belton, Middle Schools, and the renovations that have been high schools.
Yeah. So later, where? That's in Georgetown. That's on the bottom, right.
So, North Belton, South Belton, and the recent renovations to Belton High School are more aligned in line with the two forty-five number?
Yes, sir.
That's how you come up with that, so that we would be more comparable to what we-
They all have chill systems and all that?
No, and, and that's one of those, you have to balance it with the size of the school.
They have the look we're going for, but they don't have the energy up there, even those-
Correct.
Okay. Would we want that, what does it save us? I'd calculate that.
You should have let that over. Ten or fifteen or twenty here.
So do you not feel like we can get the look and the feel at the two twenty-five? Is that what we're saying?
Correct, for example, we're, we're having, we're looking at another facility, looking at this, there at the two sixty, that, that's kind of where we're seeing the industry head. Uh, and what ends up happening if you compare it to the elementary school cost, for example, high schools are just that much more specialized, so you end up putting a lot of money into those systems, the science labs, the gyms, those kinds of things.
I do, CTE.
Yep, CTE, uh, those kind of things.
I guess my fear is that our digital learning world is going to take off, and then we're going to have this million, multi-million dollar facility, and kids don't even have to come to school anymore.
We, we've had discussions about that, and all you can jump in on the library, because we've talked about, well, why do we even need a library anymore? Kids still love books, and the library is changing, and rather than a destination for books and research and quiet, it's this collaboration space, and I think it's, there's this evolution in school, so we'll always need to bring some order in life, life then.
So just to kind of help us with this, we're, it sounds like we're, we're mirroring the B, right? And so the question is, is it the hundred and twenty-five point six or the hundred and fifteen point four? Right. That's, I'm trying to narrow down, get rid of some of the, the things we've already ruled out. So on our estimated bond cost, can you write, I guess it's two different numbers for high school? It's, it's, yeah, one twenty-five, six, one fifteen, four.
Coming into all that?
Yep.
Is this coming up later?
Again, I think Jared just mentioned that the industry standard is pushing towards that other number that we're not even considering. And we're looking at this, we're looking at this building to be built three years from now, and you're trying to build it, you know, speculating out, it's going to be used for-
Thirty years.
Thirty years. The last thing you want to do is build a structure that's not up to date from the beginning, because then you're always remodeling and chasing it, and cost is a lot more expensive at that point.
So it's a ten million dollar difference, but that ten million, that costs you a lot down the road, that you're going to add on later? Is that what you're saying?
It may not be, ever to add on some of those things where you're, you're already damaged yourself from the beginning.
You, Jared, you were working off of some assumptions that we're two twenty-five, that's all we could afford, so we're just going to have to cut. You're now pushing us back a little closer, but not all the way to the industry standard two sixty number.
Correct.
Can I just come in? Sit down, please.
I just have a question, um, our side suggestion, the buildings are going to have a lot of glass, like the windows that we have, they really need to be energy efficient, because they really affect campus, and I'm sure affects electricity, I think ours is hot. But it's a lot of, um, air, when it's cold, it's very cold, a lot of windows, and it's very hot, and it's, it's very hard to keep it, um, the air conditioning right.
Which really makes the point of if you're going to do it, you better do it right.
Do it right, I just feel like you should have looked at more money spent on the windows, seriously.
Okay, thank you. Um, and some of the, again, we're not at, we're not, we're a long way from detail level of correct designing. We haven't got the schematics, but, but based on, I hear your point of, if you don't do it now, it's going to cost you more later, but you probably can't even do a lot of that stuff later.
From what he's designing, saying, what you think, I mean.
Is it going to have a baseball and softball field?
Yes.
So then those projects could come off, right? I'm sorry, I'm still back to the whole district and how we can potentially-
Those, that was the baseball softball of Belton High School.
Those upgrades to the field.
Oh, that's not another-
Those are not, that is, those are different projects, I guess.
We're not, we're not adding those on.
No, I thought those were additional fields, and I was like, well, aren't we getting another field anyway? Okay. No, I was just looking at.
So if we look at, so what, the end is going to add itself and not a little, hi, trust your man?
I've judged it like three times.
If we include the two options, so here's, let's go back to our, uh, to our questions. Do we, how do we feel about the two capital program, capital improvement projects? I think those are, my opinion is, those are well worth, uh, doing and both overdue and would be wise to do at this point. So I want to include those, and we can afford to do it. I, I have to tell you, one of the things that, that, y'all heard me say this, I have shuddered at the thought of a twenty cent tax increase, and this is not, we're not there, and it still seems to me that we have lots of potential for it to be below that if anything falls in our advantage. So, um, I'm very encouraged by that eighteen cent number that makes this, that makes me breathe much easier than, than when we were looking at twenty and twenty-three cents. And so that, that to me is, is really important, and it gives us bond capacity for future development. Certainly, this doesn't have the impact on us as a technical, so, um-
Did you land here also, just for clarity?
Well, I want to, I'm going, I'm walking through those, so I was going to, I was going to kind of walk down the list. Are we, are y'all comfortable with leaving the Lakewood Music and Gym Edition and the auditorium upgrade on our bond program, program cost?
I'll agree that Lakewood Edition is more important, it's probably the most important out of those two. Uh, it's something that's outdated way behind.
Okay, so can we check that one on? Hey, anybody consensus there? Lakewood?
Yeah, I mean, it brings it up to with the rest of it.
Auditorium upgrade?
Not a hundred percent sold on that.
What you thinking?
I don't know. I, I, if you're, if you're, we're here scrapping for money. I think that's something that we found, and we've done a lot of those projects out of, uh, general fund. And then what, what, I think we need to see what that's going to be used for, and what to use, how many students are in there to, uh, I mean, it's an older facility.
How often is it requested? How often can we think of the market?
Would you, now, let me, let me add one thing, and I'll go back to what Amanda pointed out, it's a much higher capacity one, but in the new high school, we're proposing a smaller auditorium than we have at PAC at Belton High School, right? Six hundred? So this Wall Street auditorium would be our largest or second-largest auditorium in the district if we build this moment.
I could speak a little more to its use, um, it's used for New Tech currently, it is outdated. If you walked in, it has the old stage, like you might find in an older elementary school. New Tech uses it, Bex has used it, we would use it for staff development if it were, if it had a good sound system and it were renovated. Um, we had some elementary school programs in there, I know last year we had a middle school choir concert in there because the Performing Arts Center was booked. Um, and so it gives us some additional space to have events, um, both at the district level and the campus level.
Reason it goes up on my list is because of thinking about a smaller PAC, which, which was a new concept to me, but it makes sense. I mean, those, the fine arts people say we need smaller venue, though it doesn't look like there's, it's not crowded for most, many of their events. And so having that flexibility, but having a second one in our district makes sense. We have a structure, we just shell, that's usable, we just need to upgrade it, so.
From a community perspective too.
That will have a smaller PAC.
From a community perspective, it's close to downtown and from the south.
We do have some community rentals in there.
Yeah. I mean, you walk in, it smells like nineteen forty-five. It either needs something or it needs to be eliminated. And those are the only calls I get. I know you've got a lot of calls about football and whatever else, the only calls I get are anytime someone goes to an event in that facility.
And, and I would agree, and then when I go to events, people say, where are y'all going to upgrade this?
Events in the entire district.
When would the construction of the two smaller items we're considering, when would those happen? I mean, would they-
I think, I was told as soon as possible. And, and I think the auditorium is an easier one, because it's not on an active school campus, uh, that could happen immediately. And, and then on the gym, you'd probably want to tie in for maybe like a January start, so that way it finishes come August and the new school year would start. We'd have to, of course, plan that with, and on where it's located at, having to work school around that space, traffic, because it is a active school site with close access, the close access.
And I would say too, that was, it's a little bit strange, but that facility-
Is historical for us, I'm sorry, I felt very connected to it.
And that's a big concern in the community, that adding a second high school is going to impact the culture of-
So investing area.
And that one facility has a lot of history, and it's a big piece of the culture. I don't know that it makes a difference, it may not.
It may not, but for my generation, uh, we all, that was our auditorium, yeah, it was, and so.
I just think for this side of the, of the district, it's an important facility. To me, it, it does add on, I, I, I want to tell you, we're, we're not voting on stuff now, we're kind of trying to get consensus, so that-
Okay, I would definitely just want it to really be booked a lot.
Okay, so, so let's talk about the, the, we're going to have to break and go, we've got kids to recognize and some other things, some appearances and all. So we're going to, we're going to, I think we're going to push the delivery method to our regularly, we just do it instead of workshop, we'll just do it as part of the adidas. But, but can we get the consensus on these numbers? Jason, I heard you kind of saying, it doesn't make sense to go with the lower number if the industry number is even higher than what the recommended number is, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with a two twenty-five number if we're going to build it. Certainly that's out in my mind because you're building a new structure that's already bought up to the industry standard that he's designing to. So you're really considering two forty-five and two sixty number.
Oh, you're looking at the other number, the higher number.
You were saying the other projects, other projects you're designing for now, those are pushing more towards two sixty.
But you're comfortable with two forty-five as being able to give us what we need and being.
So my, what I was going to add to my two sentences, so one is, I think B is the right choice in terms of size overall. Just in terms of when you look ten years out, man, you're going to hit a facility, so you've answered that one. I think my concern is, I think when you go in the two twenty-five, it meets the needs. I think the question I would ask is if you felt Belton High School today exactly as a sense that that's my new facility, would you be happy with that? And that's kind of where this is at, the two twenty-five. So the question is, is we look at facilities, as we look at C D E, educational learning opportunities. Personal opinion, the further that you can push this way, the happier you'll be long term with the facility.
That, that middle number gets us under a hundred and fifty total and that's appealing to me.
I agree.
If we, um, I mean, I, I, I agree with you, Jason, I, I don't want to under, I don't want to regret that we didn't invest adequately on this. You know, you have a construction background too, so your opinion, be interested in your thoughts on that too. But I, I like, the total ends up under a hundred and fifty, so we're under the, we're around that eighteen.
It's a number. It's either B or A.
B.
Is it A is out, so we're looking at B?
Yeah.
Three eighty-five?
Yeah. I think the consensus was that we're going with the B size option, is that accurate?
Yes.
So the.
Which is three hundred and ninety, three eighty-five?
Yes.
But it's fully. Question, so the two points, so now the question, Jason, you're proposing that we increase that number.
Well, you don't really know that number until you get in more into the design side of it. And it's just a matter of what you want to ask.
Jared, let me ask the contingency factor in that, is it the same ten percent?
Fifteen, fifteen, five, design, ten.
So, so there is some room to wiggle in there as we get past, I mean, what we're going to be asked to do, we haven't gotten there yet, is schematic designs, where we're going to keep rolling this out. But we do have to have a budget plan to work within for a bond issue that we would need to call soon. So that's our next step is.
Getting into delivery methods, the further you go this way, the more I would recommend C M R. And to me, that is really where somebody can really hone in on and.
Lowering the cost.
Yeah, or, or, or increasing the content that you're getting, because right now we have more per square foot. It may end up that, hey, we think because of inflation and contingency, we've got all that figured out, we can actually build the two fifties per foot school.
Or we can add some square footage. Or, or we can save it not.
Exactly.
And not have to do that, we're, we have a win-win.
And in all of our meetings with the community, we said one fifty is what we were looking at. And now we can say one fifty and we're coming back to eighteen cents.
Below one fifty and well below.
Well, technically below one fifty and we're well below twenty-three cents.
Correct.
Which might get better.
That certainly helps me sleep better.
Marketing, I mean.
Well, that one fifty number was, because that's what we were estimating and maxed us out.
We kind of all felt at that point was going to be hard to pass a bond at that maxed out rate, no matter what.
It doesn't matter if you call a sixty thousand dollar bond or a six hundred million dollar bond, you're going to have the same difficulty in there.
Passing.
Wow, I mean.
The difference of.
Now I got to pay my taxes at the end of the year.
Okay, so.
I'm just saying, you're going to have those challenges and passing whatever number you put out there, you're going to have the same challenges.
We do need to give some, some direction in terms of, of bringing back to us a package. And so we've got our, um, elementary school costs, we've got our capital programs, uh, capital improvement program costs built in. And I think you cross out those right side numbers. Uh, and, and Jason's proposing that we increase that budget for the high school. I, I, I'm comfortable with the two forty, the two numbers on the right, the one fifteen and one thirty-nine, we've ruled those out. Thank you, is that true? Whatever. So the question that Jason's proposing is, should we increase the high school cost?
I'm just saying, as you build that two forty-five high school, you keep, we keep using the number of equity. There's going to be some stuff that the old high school is not going to be able to, the new high school was built and those are some of the items that are on our list.
Right. Which we will be, which we hopefully will be able to see with those.
I felt like we were going the opposite. I felt like the new high school was going to be more of all the bells and whistles.
We're not.
That the old high school wasn't going to have. I guess when I was listening to.
That's still two forty-five.
Well, we, we're also, the, the new high school is going to be above our original high school as we're building it from what we're.
It'll be brand new.
Right, yeah. But we're breaking efforts to upgrade all the high schools, we got the, the two recent additions and furnishing, some things that we're doing there, which I thrilled about. The question becomes, what number are we comfortable with, with the total package? Frankly, I, I'm kind of with you, Amanda, in terms of a hundred and fifty is what we've been targeting as a ceiling. Um, I love that the ceiling isn't going to cock, it's not maxing us out, first of all, and it's also well below the projected, early projections of the.
That leaves leverage to go back several years down the road.
It leaves us some money on the table.
The fact that we're going to have to spend more money very soon after this is over.
And then that shows that you have.
So, so I'm comfortable with the two forty-five based on our architect's recommendations.
And we don't know what. Now, he had another recommendation, he kind of said on the sidebar that.
Delivery method was important. That's right.
With that, and that was.
We had to that.
Something we had about experience with, and the last bonds, we have to make sure that we're trusting our architect.
How about, how about this? How about if we do this, how about if we, since it's six o'clock and we've got some, some folks waiting to be recognized for us? How about if we, um, take a break, reconvene in the other room and we'll just pick this back up after we go through some other items? And, and, and Jason makes a good point, let's go ahead and finish the workshop items and then we'll circle back around. So if we could move, move this in, it is six oh one, and so we're going to take a break. A ten minute break, nine minute break? Is that long enough to reset what kind of our push shift went over?
Waited to do our pledges. We're standing for the superintendent, actually. So we, we started in the other room, but we didn't have our flags in there, so I wanted to go ahead and.
Plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I plead allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, may be seated, thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, for those of you that are just joining us, we apologize for keeping you waiting. We were in the other room in a workshop, uh, sitting, working on our roadmap to twenty twenty-five planning. Uh, we're going to begin this section of our, of our meeting with some recognitions. So Kyle, you want to get us started? I think we're going to start recognizing our bi-district football champion team, Belton Tiger, bi-district champions. Want to get us started with that? And Coach Shipley, you got some delegates here to come accept us.
We are indeed, we're, we're very excited to recognize tonight Tiger Football, who for the third straight season made it to the playoffs. And they claimed their second, uh, bi-district championship in three years. They had a, a great bi-district first round of the playoffs, beating South Grand Prairie thirty-eight to thirty. And that came on top of a regular season record of seven and three. So we're really excited about the season that the Tigers have.
Awesome, Coach Shipley, come on up, bring your guys up, come on up here for a photo op. Got some good looking guys over here. Mr. Crowther's going to have a little certificate, we're going to pose a photo op for you, come on up here. And if anybody else wants to come take a picture, you are more than welcome to. Why, get those coaches up here with these guys too. Coach Shipley, you want to add anything to what Kyle just mentioned?
Well, we didn't figure y'all would want sixty-five football players in here. So we had, uh, our, uh, these are just kind of the cream of the crop, our senior leaders here. And, uh, they, uh, were freshmen when I came in, uh, in March of the freshman year. And I'm sad to see these guys go, as a matter of fact, I'm so sad.
You're going with.
Going good.
Way to go, guys.
I, I really appreciate these kids, the way they represented our school and our community and, uh, and the, the sport of Texas High School football. Uh, they, they, they play like champions. I heard so many of you comment that you love to watch these guys play. And they're as funny a group of coaches as I've ever been around, so thank you so much for that.
You bet, congratulations, guys, appreciate you representing your team, but, but even more, appreciate how you've represented our community this year. We've had a great time cheering for you and you got better each week and you played to the end, all the way through. Uh, you've left a great legacy for those who come behind you, so thank you for what you've done. So y'all smile and pose and kind of, you're going to have to scrunch up a little bit, some of you could come up here and get on the podium and get behind them. A little picture, come on, come on, guys. Get in here and get a picture.
Unless you lay it on the front with your.
No. These guys are going to go on, there you go, hold that. There you go, there you go, adjusting. Y'all smile. We are safe. There's nothing getting through that line, thanks, guys. Thank you, guys. I should have mentioned before on the agenda, it shows we were going to recognize our robotics team. Uh, they've requested to be delayed until next month, uh, so that they could all be here, so we're going to hold that one. Uh, next is, um, South Belton Middle School, Apple certified teachers.
Uh, when South Belton Middle School opened, it also marked the beginning of the one-to-one initiative in Belton I S D. Through that initiative now, today, every secondary student in the district has access to a device, either an iPad or an iPad mini or a MacBook Pro. And, um, they're using that to deepen and enrich learning. South Belton Middle School is also one of our two Apple distinguished schools. And tonight, we can add another accolade related to the one-to-one program for South Belton Middle School. And that's that one hundred percent of the campus's classroom teachers have earned at least one badge through the Apple Teacher Program. That's a professional development program that allows them to explore and deepen best practices for integrating technology and Apple products in the classroom. And so tonight, we're joined by Kiana White, the Campus Principal, and Josh Essery, who have been essential in, in making the Apple Teacher Program happen at South Belton Middle School.
That's a cool deal. You know, it's been, it has been fun over the years since we opened South Belton Middle School to see the recognition that that campus has received and the students and the faculty and the, and the building. It's been a wonderful, uh, representation of our school district and our community. And once again, y'all are rising up to the challenge and setting the bar high, so thank you for what you're doing, proud of y'all. Okay, and we are also going to delay the Rotary Educator of the Month because she was unable to join us this evening. So let's move to the Big Red Community Partner, Belton Police Department.
I'm really excited to recognize the Belton Police Department as our Big Red Community Partner this month. Uh, we have a very visible partnership with the Police Department in ensuring the safety of the district's students and staff and facilities. But there are some really cool things happening that the public in the community may not be as aware of as they are of the safety that the Police Department provides. Officers from the Belton Police Department have supported our career in technical education programs focused on law enforcement, training students in building searches, handcuffing techniques, felony traffic stop procedures. They've given students real insight into, uh, what a career in law enforcement means. And all of this really comes together for our career in technical education students to help them be successful in Skills USA competitions, but also just to figure out if law enforcement's a path that they want to pursue in their life.
It's been a great partnership, it's so many avenues, but this is not, it's this partnership and way to do that, so thank you for that. Okay, we're going to look over here, do you have a, where you want it? Great, thank you, guys, appreciate the work you're doing, the, the, you are our. Sam Listy's here, I'm not sure who's going to do that, that item, but we'll hold on that one a minute. Hey, can we?
You want to do that first?
Yeah, can we, can we go ahead and do the presentation from the city first?
Sure.
I'm going to, I'm going to change the order since we've got folks here and Sam Listy's here, come on up and, and, uh, we're, we're going to take up the presentation of the Child Safety Fee Funds from the City of Belton. Because we like to give.
Always like to give money.
We appreciate you coming each year for this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pittinger, board members, Dr. Kincanon, greetings from Mayor and City Council members. Uh, it's always fun to bring money to the, to the school board, uh, as opposed to us coming asking for money. So it's, this is always an exciting time for us. Uh, as you know, the section five oh two of the Transportation Code authorized the county to collect an additional one dollar and fifty cents for each vehicle registration. And Bell County does collect that full amount. Belton's share of funding from ten one fifteen through nine thirty sixteen amounts to twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and some change, up from twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars last year. While some other area cities have decided to use these funds for other allowed purposes, Belton has chosen to honor the legislative intent for these funds and direct them to the intended purposes of the Crossing Guard Program to ensure school children's safety. The City of Belton is remitting these funds to B I S D plus the fees collected on city fines for use in B I S D's school crossing guard program, and it's our pleasure to do so.
Thank you, I'm happy to accept. But they're the real champion here. Yeah, that's the real, that's the real deal. Listen, I, I want to just reiterate, you said this, but not every city does this and not every school district gives, gives the money that is, was the legislative intent of this. And so every year when you come, we're thankful, but we recognize you don't have to do that. So we're very thankful, please, that's the Mayor and Council, our appreciation for our partnership and, and so many great things. And while we've got to, just want to celebrate a little bit more, we've got that new park. The new park is open and going and looks beautiful, they have a new park on, uh, the, the, South Belton Middle School campus. It's a beautiful park and have a partnership between the school district.
Thank you, thank you for that information.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to pass the check on.
All right, can you do it now?
Sure. While you're going, I, I try and avoid this and delay this as much as I can. I, I do also want to mention, while Dr. Kincanon's moving up to the podium, I hope everybody had an opportunity to see the Belton High School musical this last weekend. Oh my, what an incredible production of our Fine Arts Department, our theater, um, orchestra, um, choir program, all of our fine art students involved in that, uh, just tremendous sets, costuming, uh, amazing production. Uh, it was really, really very impressive, so I hope you had an opportunity, if you didn't, you missed it.
I think it was one of my favorites, it was very well done. And we'll talk about that when we talk about A through F in a, in a little while.
Okay.
Um, this is, January is School Board Appreciation Month and each year, the Texas Association of School Boards selects a theme. Sometimes the theme fits and sometimes it doesn't. This year, however, the theme is perfect for our board. And that theme is All-Star Team. And we're blessed to have an all-star team of trustees who are volunteering their time on behalf of our students and our taxpayers. on behalf of our students and our taxpayers. So, if you think about the qualities that define an all-star team, um, some of those might be dedication, focus, sacrifice, and love of the game, right, Coach Shipley? Love of the game. Yes. I caught him. I'm sorry. Sorry, Coach. Those are qualities that absolutely describe our board and they're qualities that have been especially evident throughout the long-range facilities planning process. The decisions that you're making tonight are the product of three years of study, um, multiple community listening sessions, months of work with a committee of parents, educators, students, and community members. And throughout it all, our school board members have remained focused on two big questions. What's the best thing for our kids? And how do we provide the greatest value for our taxpayers? Like most of the board's work, planning for our fast growth hasn't always been easy. Tonight's not an easy night for us. And like all of the board's work, our trustees are doing it as volunteers. But they do it because they love our kids and they love our community. And thanks to this all-star team, both our kids and our community are better off. And so, I'd like to take a moment, um, to personally recognize each of our trustees and to thank them for their service. President Randy Pittinger was first elected to the school board in nineteen ninety-four. Vice President Mike Cowan has served on the board since two thousand seven. Uh, Sue's not with us tonight, but she is our secretary, Sue M. Jordan, and she joined the board in twenty thirteen. Mr. Jason Carruthers and Mrs. Amanda Winkler were first elected in two thousand eleven. And Mr. Leo Camden Jr. was first appointed to fill a vacancy in two thousand fifteen. And Mr. Jeff Norwood, our newest member, um, was elected last year. So, we want to thank you for your service this evening. Thank you for being our all-star team. And as a token of our appreciation, uh, my leadership team is going to come up and bring each of you a team blanket and a spirit basket, a goodie basket for you, um, for our team. Thank you very much for your service.
We already got an extra mile, extra from South Belton.
Come on, don't be shy. Here comes Scott. These are, um...
Pick your favorite, pick your favorite.
Personalized blanket, all-star board.
Who's assigned? Are you assigned to me? Oh, why does it have a name on it and everything?
And if you would, bring your blankets up and let's take a picture up at the front together.
This is like our Letterman jackets.
It is. You have your very own Belton B patch.
Hey, this is like the, actually, it's like the academic...
Academic awards banquet, yes.
Our smarter kids get these. Do we have Sue's? I'll hold it.
What does he want to hold? Oh, Sue's blanket. Mike, Mike has his.
How do you hold your, how do you, would you like to hold your blanket? There you go.
She says one, two, three, and she needs three, remember? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, uh, I will say it is a great honor for us to be part of the team. An all-star team of students, faculty, administrators, and staff who are making this an extraordinary school district and a, and a great community that supports our students. It is an honor to represent our community, uh, and a great privilege. And we do volunteer.
It's all volunteer work.
Yeah. Every time we're reminded of that, we don't, yeah. But, thanks. It's a fun thing and we're appreciative. Um, okay. Amanda, there's cameras. You're, remember, we're live streaming. No, we're not live streaming, but everything. Yes. No, I don't. Okay, moving right along, we need to have a couple of hearings, I think. Our first public hearing is for the Texas Academic Performance Report. Uh, Dr. Love Smith's gonna do that. It is six twenty-six. So, we will open the public hearing. I know some of y'all are here for some, uh, personnel action. We'll get to that soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, tonight, we're going through the Texas Academic Performance Report. That's known as our TAPER report. And I do just want to begin by clarifying, this is based on the original accountability system. So, I don't want anyone to get this confused with our recent A through F eight ratings that were received. That's actually a separate system. But what the, um, state does this time of year is they do a comprehensive report that includes more than just our academic performance. So, the first thing they do look at though is our district performance. And this is what we talked about earlier in the spring, all of our campuses, as well as the district met the standard, um, expectations. And, um, in addition to that, we had twenty-seven distinctions among all of our campuses. And so, we're, again, continue to be proud of the academic achievement that we're seeing. This report breaks it down a little bit farther. And it, one of the things it looks at is the passing rate of all of our grades. And so, in this chart, I'm just showing you the, um, combined all grades by subject. And you can see our district performance compared to the state. And I would point out that we did make improvements in every area. And that's with, um, additional increased standards that, um, that are on each of those tests. One thing I also want to point out, and this is our riding scores, as you know, um, riding has been a major district initiative. That is a systemic process. So, this year, we, this actually doesn't reflect, um, the work we're continuing to put in place in that area in, um, reference to where we're looking at riding K through twelve. So, so, we're gonna, it'll take us a while to get where we want to be in that area, but we continue to, um, move forward. This also looks at our, um, advanced academic performance. And so, those kids that are, um, scoring at the top of the assessments and, again, compared to the state, we are higher in, um, all areas. And then, so, our social studies is right on par with the state, um, at twenty-two percent, which is a very high percentage of students performing at the advanced level. And then, in addition to our academic, which we've reported to you before, it takes into account a number of other areas. And we've pulled out for you tonight just the most, um, the ones that, that we'd like you to, you know, look at. The, the comprehensive report will be online. But in the areas where it looks at our attendance rate, uh, our annual dropout rate, and that's broken down both by, um, seventh and eighth graders, and then it looks at it separately for high schoolers. Our graduation rate, that's based on, um, a four-year completion rate and graduation. Our college readiness for English Language Arts and our college readiness for math. And again, in every one of those areas, we're performing higher than the state. It also looks at a number of, um, our advanced academic opportunities. So, it looks at our AP percentage. Um, it looks at both participation and passing. And I have on here our percent that scored three or higher, our SAT results, our average SAT, our ACT, and then graduates in Texas institutions, um, completing one year without remediation. Um, we saw a few decreases, however, where we saw them, so did the state. So, in the end, we still, um, are, are performing higher than the state. Anybody that takes it and, and the score is reported attached to our institution. And then, it looks at our graduation rate. We're really proud of this. Um, eighty-six percent of our students compared to eighty percent at the state level are graduating on that recommended or distinguished plan. And we push that until the bitter end, um, to make sure that on that recommended, they're getting their four years in each of those content areas and two years of Language Arts. And so, we, we really hold that, our counselors hold a, and our high school principals hold that high standard until the end. This also looks at our student demographics. And so, it looks at the makeup of Belton right now. And, um, for this, so, some of the data is, um, for the fifteen, sixteen years, sometimes it'll jump back a year. I've tried to indicate where that happens. Um, again, overall, in our student demographics, we're eighty-seven percent white and Hispanic combined. And then, we have a six-point-six percent African-American population. And then, it also looks at our subgroups. So, it breaks down our economic, uh, which is forty-six-point-one percent, ELL, uh, seven-point-two, at-risk, fifty-two-point-five. At-risk is a little higher than our low socioeconomic. One thing I can tell you there is that a lot of our kindergartners come in starting at at-risk just based on the criteria and if they're not able to quite read yet. And so, that, that, um, raises that number a little bit. And then, um, our special education is at ten-point-four. We continue to, to meet the needs of our kids. If, if they have the needs, we're serving our, our students. It looks at our staff demographics. And I think what's the most interesting when it breaks out all of the different populations within our district is that sixty-point-one percent of our populations are directly on the campus. So, that's our teachers, our campus administrators, and our, um, educational aides. And then, eight percent is, uh, professional support, one-point-two percent central office administration. And then, auxiliary staff is the other largest, um, percentage that's at thirty percent, and that's serving our campuses. That's gonna be your maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, um, so, serving our, our campuses. It looks at our teachers by years of experience and degrees. And I think this is really exciting and, and connected directly to our academic performance. Because when you look at this slide, you are gonna see that over ninety-five, about ninety-five percent of our teaching staff has, um, at least one to five years of experience. But we have a large percentage, um, about seventy percent, it looks like, in the six to twenty years. And six years of experience in the classroom gets you on down the road and, and really knowing your standards and classroom procedures and providing, um, a, a great environment for our students. And then, on that sidebar, it looks at the, the, um, degrees of our staff. We have seventeen-point-eight percent of our staff with a master's in the classroom and, um, point-five percent with a doctorate. Um, and that, that also is just that advanced education and that our, our children benefit. Looks at our class size. When we look at this, I want to, um, tell you again, we're compared to the state. Um, this is the priority for us. We constantly are watching our class sizes. This can be a little skewed because, um, oh, I think it's over eighty percent of the school districts are small districts. And so, when you see class sizes that are smaller, if you're a small school and you've only, only half, twelve or fifteen kindergartners, you're gonna skew that average a little bit. And so, um, from our standpoint, we constantly are monitoring, uh, our classrooms to make sure that we stay under the state twenty-one to twenty-two ratio for K through four. We also look at that in fifth grade. And then, we're watching our middle school numbers because we know that those have really been growing. And we keep, um, keep on those and look at, at the sections and number of kids we have there. That's evident in our secondary averages. So, secondary is going to look at your seventh through twelfth grade. And then, it doesn't look at it by grade level anymore. That would be almost impossible at the high school level. So, it looks at it by content and compares us to the state. I also would like to add that last year, we did add thirteen-point-five secondary teaching positions. So, when I say we're watching that, we constantly are addressing that need. Then, it, final piece, it looks at our safe schools. And there's a number of criteria that the state decides to pull, um, when looking at safe schools. And when I would look at this chart, what I'll, I'll say is that every, um, area where we have a number of instances, the total percentage represents less than one percent of the population. So, um, it, it'll look at, um, all your different discipline referrals and break those down into certain categories. And again, safe, safe schools is a, is one of our major initiatives for this year's the district. We implemented Safe and Civil Schools and CHAMP's programs to continue to, to make sure that's important with our schools. And finally, it looks at our student performance and post-secondary institutions. And so, this is the last year to report only students from Belton High School. So, next year, this will include our Belton High School and our New Tech High School grads. So, this is actually reporting from the thirteen-fourteen school year who then enrolled in college their, um, fifteen year. And the next slide's gonna break down, um, the, where those students went. Again, this can be a little bit misleading because it doesn't just look at where students enrolled. It, it assigns a student to an institution based on the number of college hours that they have over the course of a school year, not just the calendar year. So, all of our kids that are in those dual credit classes are, are more than likely gonna be assigned to Temple College. So, that Temple College number is a little bit higher, um, than, than maybe an accurate picture. However, it still gives us and our counselors especially, an idea of where kids are going in the area. And, um, you can see the major institutions there, U M H B, Texas A&amp;M, Texas State University, just a lot of the schools that, that we expect. The, um, entire report is, is over a hundred pages and it will be posted. Currently, we have our annual reports posted on our website, Accountability, and then we will be posting the entire TAPER report for you. Any questions?
If you have any questions or comments regarding the paper report? If Board Members have any other questions, sorry to take you.
Maybe see at some point, you know, how we compare class sizes to maybe comparable district. It's a point that matters how they're...
We, we watch that all the time and, um, we're constantly monitoring our, um, master schools and other districts and important factors of school districts. We have, we have added, we have six of those thirteen positions, being mentioned, we're at the middle school level for this school year, the rest of the high school level. And so, we're, we're trying to keep the pace with the rest of the district. But we, we're happy to share any of that, whatever, if we can be of the heart.
Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, then it is six thirty-eight, and we will, uh, close that public hearing and we will open the second public hearing, six thirty-eight, or regarding the District of Innovation Plan.
Okay. I'm gonna let Rachel drive for me back there. Um, District of Innovation was, um, a result of the eighty-fourth legislative session in House Bill eighteen.
And use spaces that we have planned for as we moved in this direction, such as the upgrade to the digital learning center that we provided last summer. The second part of this exemption of this project would be to pilot our own locally developed online blended learning course in a core content area with, again, some flexibility to complete that course at home, from home. And this would be a pilot project. We will try this in a very small way with the goal of having students and teachers, teachers guiding instruction in a flexible way at the high school level for juniors and seniors where where teachers could provide instruction on some days in the classroom as soon as we work at home or come in or come in and work in small groups on other days. So this starts to begin to offer some flexibility for students and for teachers to provide different instructional arrangements. And so we're very excited about this particular exemption, which exempts us from the ninety percent of attendance in the class in the day of the days that classes offer. And then the very last piece of our District of Innovation Plan has to do with the first day of instruction. Now, the state mandates that the first day of instruction is on the fourth weekend. Instruction has to begin no earlier than the fourth Monday in August. Our plan calls for the ability to begin earlier based on community value. We live in a military connected community. Federal holidays are valued here. We work with our post-secondary institutions to partner for dual credit. Our students begin their courses in the summer, and we want to be able to take all of those factors into consideration, including when we want to have spring break or how long we want Thanksgiving or Christmas to be. And in the case of a year when the fourth Monday falls late, it's very difficult to develop a calendar that provides for all of the things that are recorded locally. And so this would allow us to begin earlier. And so that's it. That is the plan. Again, the board would have to adopt that plan. Big slide. Has to be a majority, two-thirds majority vote. Once adopted, that goes and can go into effect for up to five years. We are proposing that it that it do that, and we have the ability to amend that plan anytime during that five years. And that is it. If there are any questions about District of Innovation Plan.
Public hearing, anybody have any questions or comments? Board member have any questions or comments? Hearing none. It's six forty-six, and we will close the public hearing. For your work on that project. Next item is public comments. I didn't see anybody who had signed up for that. Thirty-eight thinkers. Hearing none. Consent agenda in the item. Any board member have any items they'd like to hold up and consent agenda for discussion? Identify those items, determine the minutes of December twelfth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting, the Honored and Financial Report for the month ending December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. We have the gifts, grants, requests of less than a thousand dollars that is provided just for information. No action is needed. Sorry, I turned my mic off. Other revenues of at least a thousand but less than ten thousand. We have a donation of $1,000. Taylor valued at twenty-five hundred dollars. Appreciate that donation for student use. We have the other revenues and grants from private sources, the child safety fund that has discussed earlier, two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents from the city. We're very thankful for that. And then we have supply equipment and service bids. We have one career and technical education equipment supplies and services RFP one six one one dash two zero two dash one four seven to approve and vendor them. Contract is effective through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, with two automatic renewals a year at a time. And then finally, the annual student, the annual report of student activity funds maintained at the high schools. This is a report only. Your motion to approve, consent agenda? Motion, here's the count, second to Ms. Winkler. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Pass it to you, Dan, to sleep. Next item, it's a super dinner. That'd be great.
It's like I'm going back and forth, so I'll do this one from here. Just a couple of items this evening. The first is the construction technology outdoor shop project and automotive technology building update. The construction technology outdoor shop area is now complete, as you can see in the photo on the screen. David and his crew did add lighting this past week and requested our students who are very eager in practice and prepare for their teamwork's competition, even if that means into the evening hours. And so I know Rick Sullivan is very excited to be able to use this space, and it is being used. As for the automotive technology facility, Concrete Curve and Gutter is down one hundred percent. We're expecting the metal building on February the fifteenth, and you all can expect to see a change or to change the work schedule for that project. The anticipated project completion date is now May the fifteenth, so that's been pulled back a little, pushed back a little bit. The next item are our school calendar options. Before he left, Dr. Brandon had been working with David for several months to develop some calendar options for next year. So you have a copy of two calendars that are currently under consideration that have been developed. They're both pretty similar in that they have the same Thanksgiving, Christmas, and spring breaks. Do you all have those?
Yes.
Okay. Both of them have student holidays that are in alignment with federal holidays. I talked about the District of Innovation Plan and the desire to to maintain some of those federal holidays, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Martin Luther King, and President's Day. Option two picks up an additional holiday on January second for students. Both calendars have the same bad weather days that will be March thirtieth and April twenty-third. And really, the main difference in these two calendars is the beginning and ending dates. Both calendars do begin before the fourth Monday in August, so they do assume an approval of the District of Innovation. Option one shows a start date of August third for teachers, while option two shows our teachers coming back on August the ninth. Option one has our students beginning on the sixteenth, which is on a Wednesday, while option two has students coming back on Monday, August the twenty-first. And then option one ends before Memorial Day on May the twenty-third. Option two ends just after Memorial Day on May the thirtieth. We would still have graduation on Thursday evening on either calendar just after school ends, and that is it on the calendar. Questions?
I need to say a little bit more about confused how. It looks like one of them starts forward. Sixteen to twenty-first is only three school days, except we're only gaining two at the end. So there's two different at the end, but three different in the beginning, so I don't know why that's the same number of school days.
One of them has the January second addition.
That's the addition. Gotcha. That's it. That's it. Thank you. Yeah, I I mean, looking at this, I can imagine our teachers are going to prefer the second choice, although, again, we're going to have two days after Memorial Day holiday at school. We think, see what, how bad the states are.
Our practice has been that I have focused on the calendar, and we did come back this year with a proposed calendar in for Memorial Day. We have many teachers who have agreed.
Do we have a an option that the this state legislature doesn't allow us to start early? Do we have that option?
I believe we do. I asked Dr. Brandon to work on that sometime. He did do that, however, I don't know.
Hopefully, that won't be an issue, but that is an option. Great. Okay, anybody have any questions on the end? Oh, go ahead. You're not done.
One last item, really short. Legislative session has begun. It's in full swing already. Couple of things to mention. The proposed state budget, which was released by the Texas Council of Joe Strauss, would increase funding for public education by one point five billion in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That increase would be in addition to the two point six to five million that Texas schools would receive because of projected enrollment growth of approximately one hundred and sixty-five thousand students during the next two school years. I thought you might be interested in that growth number. The additional one point five billion would be contingent on a passage of legislation to increase equity in the school finance system. And Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick says he will consider additional funds for public school education only if the legislature also passes a school choice voucher bill. And speaking of voucher bills, I made a call from Representative Shine last week to discuss these proposals that are already, some bills that are already being talked about, one being an education savings grant, which is a voucher bill that was introduced, that is being introduced to target at-risk and special education population home as a way to open the door for vouchers. So he and I did talk about that. I appreciated him calling me to ask my opinion, and I I did explain that that I felt the bill would not limit special needs students or at-risk students at private schools because private schools could still be selected as rich students to pay and take. And I feel that we're very qualified to serve those students and those populations, so.
Let's be clear, school choice is really schools' choice. It's the schools' choice. We, public schools take everyone. Private schools get to choose, so school choice is a misnomer. It's schools. A must be yes.
And then finally, the Senate Education Committee was announced this past week, and it is being chaired by Larry Taylor, and it's pretty stacked with legislators who are in support of schools.
So the the first couple of weeks of legislature, it's very clear, the House is actually interested in maybe helping with equity and doing some things to to improve public education, and the Senate is not. The Senate is focused on on taking public funds out of public school and giving them private schools without any accountability and and not helping public education. So it's pretty clear where the lines are.
So far.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, next item. Resolution concerning the A F accountability rating system. Speaking of the legislature, this has been an issue. We talked about this at the last month's meeting. The failure, the flaws of the A F accountability system has ruled out that it's been validated.
Deanna spoke about the TAPR, which is the current accountability system. The legislature passed a new system requiring the commissioner to assign letter grades of A through F beginning with twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. And they released, just after Christmas, a preview of that rating system, assigning letter grades in four domains, student performance, student progress, closing performance gaps, and post-secondary readiness. And then and then there's one more component that we haven't seen in that preview, and that was the calculation of the, how we're going to factor in the community engagement into that overall letter grade. And so we have been clear on where we stand on this issue. We have a more holistic definition of student success. It does, it includes not only STAR test scores, but also the student credit achievement, our placement courses, our CTE programs, and how our students do in all aspects of learning, really academic competitions, athletics, fine arts, community service, and their daily work. And I I mentioned the Drouchy Chaperone or musical. I think I've had the opportunity to watch that a couple of hours yesterday. Performance, nothing about this accountability system measures our students' achievement and that on that performance. And so very passionate about this issue, that looking at only preliminary letter grade is really an incomplete picture of student success. It's an incomplete picture of our campuses and our school districts. And even our Leon Heights Elementary received three Cs and a D, yet the Texas Education Agency recognized Leon Heights for strong performance and was nominated and was selected as a national award in school. And so there is some confusion among systems and inconsistencies, and we would like to ask you all tonight to adopt a resolution that really confirms our commitment to developing our students as well grounded individuals and ask for the repeal of A F system.
We have the resolution there. If I just read it, you can kind of summarize that. You know, just to add, even the Texas Education Agency Commissioner discounted the results on this one. The intent of the legislation was to make it clear for people to understand and accurate and valid, and this system has proven to be none of the above. It is based on flawed system of high stakes testing that's been shown to not be valid in many ways. And it's, we would, no teacher or parent would ever stand for getting one grade for their student. A single grade doesn't tell the story, and so it's not clear, it's not comprehensive, it's not accurate. So I think this is, as we talked about last month, I appreciate you bringing this back to us. It was a recommendation. Does anybody have any comments want to add to this? Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion for Mr. Kim, the second for Ms. Winkler. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Passing it in, so we will sign that, put that in motion, and make sure that we send that to our elected representatives.
Send it to Caspian as well.
Great. Well, some of you all came, including some of you standing behind cameras, came for the next agenda item, so thank you for waiting for us to get to this item. Those things are important, and we have some other things that are important later too. But I know you're excited and interested to hear about our personnel decision, recommendations for an athletic director and a football coach, so.
Well, I was so excited, I had to talk really fast to those other items so we could get to this. But I am thrilled this evening to recommend.
But I am thrilled this evening to recommend two new employees to you, don't do, but two new hires to you. First, Michael Morgan, I'd like to recommend Mike as our athletic director. Mike's been with us for the last 10 years and during that time, he has demonstrated his leadership abilities in his role as assistant athletic director. And for me personally, he's going to go to person. I have been able to call him at any point over those 10 years for anything that I've needed with athletic issue. And he's always been very helpful. He's highly respected by the staff, our parents, and our community members and our students, as was evident on social media after Friday's announcement of tonight's recommendation. He has a master's degree in coaching and athletic administration, a bachelor's degree in exercise and sports science. His wife Becky teaches fourth grade for us at Sparta Elementary. Their daughter Abby was one of our athletes who graduated from Belton High School last year. She's attending Texas Tech this year. And their son Seth attends North Belton Middle School. Mike loves Belton and he's committed to our programs and our kids. And I'm proud to recommend him as our new athletic director.
I know you're going to want to do the next one, but before you do, I just want to say, Coach Shipley, we appreciate your service to our community, to our schools, and especially to our students. Thank you for what you've done and the expectations you brought and the coaches you brought into our system to work with our students. We do appreciate your work and we wish you well as you move on to the next phase of your life and your family will be following that. And we appreciate you. I'll have another word about Coach Morgan in just a minute. But go ahead. I know you want to do.
Okay, the next, yes, the next person I'd like to recommend is Samuel Skidmore as our head football coach. Since Skidmore joined our coaching staff in 2014, he served as an athletic, assistant athletic director, offensive coordinator, and strength and conditioning coach. I've heard a lot about Sam from my daughter and thinks about his workouts pretty routinely.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. He's been a strong presence in our program for the past three years and he makes it happen for our kids. Our kids have a great deal of respect for him as well and so do their parents. He has a master's degree in kinesiology and a bachelor's degree in exercise and sports science. Sam's wife, Kelly is here this evening and she's volleyball coach herself. And they are expecting their first child, a son, and we're excited for them. And I'm pleased to recommend Samuel Skidmore as our head football coach.
I want to, Jeff didn't say anything?
Well, I do. You know, I always tell them.
Go ahead. Did you go first?
First, I'm so thrilled and thankful that this is a natural process. It didn't necessarily go so natural when you came on, Coach Shipley, but I was so proud and thankful to have you here. I have connections across the river and the first thing I heard before it was ever even out there, other than we were getting a new coach and your retirement had been posted, was I sure hope they hired Mike Morgan for the job. He's the right person. So our entire community, Belton Temple, I would even venture to say Colleen Copperscope, everybody knew that you were the right person for the job. And I've told you personally before that I appreciate you. And I'm really thankful as my son is growing through this program and my daughter as well. It gives me comfort and peace to know that they're in your hands and Sam you too. And so thank you for that. You have a great coaching staff. I've known a couple of them personally for a long time. And so knowing that I'm hardcore Belton and my kids are going to be in your programs, I'm very thankful that we made this decision as a mama. So thank you.
Well, certainly, it is exciting when you can promote from within and when your district is growing and developing folks from within, that's a bonus. There's a known.
Continuity is.
Continuity is so important.
We have, I'm so glad that coaches came to support tonight. We have a great team.
As you mentioned and Amanda also mentioned, the response we've received from the community has been really very, very, very positive. Social media has been very positive, but the comments and calls I've received have been very positive. These are two men who are well, well-respected in our athletic department, in our schools, and in our community. And that says a lot about both of you. And so we're very appreciative of your work and the status of our program, our athletic program, our student effort. So we are excited about this movement. This is, this is an exciting time for our students and I. Shout out to you coaches who come out and came out tonight to be supportive. We appreciate you. Thank you for what you're doing and for your willingness to be here to show support for them. Anybody else have a comment on that? I think we're going to go ahead and get the rest of our personnel recommendations, but while Todd's coming up, anybody else have a comment? Okay, Todd, you want to tell us the other, then we'll, we'll take them, look for a motion for our personnel recommendations.
And then in addition to those, they've hired, so we have two teachers that we're recommending, a history teacher for South Public Medical School and a regular, sort of great teacher. And those two, they moved from elementary to recent record, and so we're talking as well. And we have five resignations that we have.
And neither one of them are present. Is that correct? I want to make sure that's correct.
Correct.
Don't go anywhere. We're, I'm asking you to come up and speak if you'd like a word, but is there a motion to approve personnel recommendations as made? Have a motion, Mr. Dolwood, second, second, Mr. Callan. Any comments, questions? All in favor, motion raised hand? That is an enthusiastic congratulations. Mike, we are excited about your leadership of our athletic program. Sam, we are so excited about your leadership of our football program. You have an opinion to say as.
I never want to shy away from it. I'm talking to the group. I just want to say thank you to B I S D, to her trustees, Dr. Kecan and her staff. I mean, this is a, this is a great opportunity and I look at it as an opportunity to serve in this capacity, to do things for our programs, for our student athletes, for our coaches and our campuses that will help them be successful, help them meet, meet our goal of helping them learn how to compete and learn how to handle themselves in the right way with character and class and represent our community and represent themselves well. And, you know, that, that's the biggest thing I see in this role, that where I won't be in day to day on the field coaching kids, which is going to be the biggest, biggest change for me. But we've got a great staff and you see a lot of these guys are here tonight. They're doing an awesome job. And we've got a lot of other great coaches and people that have a passion for athletics and the lessons it can teach in our middle schools and in all of our sports. And I just see this as an opportunity to go into, to be of service to them and help create good programs that our kids will thrive in and learn those things that will help them be successful adults someday. So I'm very excited for that. And very excited to, like I said, just get to work with these guys and we've got a lot of good people on staff. And part of my job is going to be trying to retain good people and try to bring in good people whenever we have those openings that come up. And I'm going to take that job very seriously along with all the other responsibilities. So once again, thanks for the opportunity and we look forward to going to work and putting good product out there that the community can be proud of.
Thank you. Good work.
My wife Becky is here and Seth, they're stacking.
Coach Morgan understands the concept of student athlete as well as anybody I've ever been around. And I even heard some comments from students saying, Coach Morgan won't let athletes not be students first. And it's obvious with you in this role that will continue to be a high priority for our program. And so thank you for that.
We just preach to our kids, you know, that we want you to have options when you're 18, 19 years old. If your grades aren't very good, then your options are much more limited than they would be. I said, that's a universal message. I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're going to head. I'm going to keep preaching it and hopefully kids will keep listening and going to tutorials.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. Coach Skidmore, our head football coach. It's always hard to follow Mike up, I'll tell you that. I'm not quite the talker he is.
But I'm very grateful and thankful for this opportunity. I love the kids here in Belton. Thanks to Dr. Kecan for this opportunity. You know, Coach Shipley hired me back in 2009 in Brownwood. He's taught me so much about not just football, but how to be a, how to be a man and how to be a mentor. And I can never repay all the things he's done for me and my family. In fact, he married me and my wife last spring.
I didn't, I didn't marry.
But we have, you know, like Mike said, we have, we have a great staff. It's great to keep the continuity of our staff together. The kids are working hard. One thing about the kids here in Belton, they work extremely hard. They come to work every day with a great work ethic. We have great kids. And we, Coach Shipley's built a foundation. We just want to keep adding on to that foundation. And I'm very thankful for my wife, Kelly, who's there in the back. She's a coach, so she understands the hours and time commitment as well as anybody. And so she's been very supportive of this move. And like I said, we have a great staff, great kids, great communities for it. And it's an unbelievable experience. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And I really did want you to come up, Kelly. Becky, we understand the commitment that it takes to do this level of job. And so we want to thank you for being supportive of this and allowing your husbands to lead our athletic programs and lead our students. So thank you for that. Go Tigers! Go Tigers! There we go.
I have, I have a gift for Coach Skidmore and his wife who are having their, maybe beginning with May.
This will be a huge moment. Tigers, there you go. You start them young, you raise them high. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you. And I suspect there are some reporters who want some other words from you, so we'll allow that to happen as we continue our meeting. But more than welcome to continue on with our agenda in our meeting. But coaches, appreciate you all being here. That's fun. All right. All right. Hello, Becky. Want to come back and talk to us about the course request?
Hi, do you? I do. I did too. Frank Teas and I, very happy to bring you to our event. Our course request, and while she's getting that up, I talked a lot when we talked about our achievement and what's one of your classroom brag on the principles. And before I start this work, our most brag on the CNI department. This, I meant to give a little shout out to Dawn, but she did a lot of the T A P O report. But this work is immense amount of work. It starts in the summer to get us just to the point to have that list of courses. And so Kim, Chrissy, Anderson have owned our course catalog. It's so like it's norm. It's kind of kicking off. We'll have that published. And then just the work of Dawn and Amanda and Carolyn and our department leaders and just looking at those courses. And it's, I just really appreciate that, their strength. We are going to continue the course planning guide. We brought this in place last year. And we have found a lot of value. We've gotten a lot of positive comments from our parents. So high school choices are no longer easy. There's a lot of things to maneuver. And so we have literally tried to put everything we can think about in this course catalog. And it's starting earlier. It does start with their middle school where they can choose a lot of their, they can start to take some high school courses. And we really want, want students get at least in the seventh grade, although sometimes it starts as early as the sixth, to start thinking about those next six years and what that means and what those course courses mean for them. So we are continuing that. And to get here, like I said, we, it's a process. So starting as early as August, we barely get back to school. And our content directors are looking at teaks. They're looking at revisions with our teaks. They're looking at our four-year strands. They're meeting with our teachers to look at what courses we're offering, what are new courses out there? How would those courses, if we wanted to add something, how would they affect our enrollment populations? And then in December, we try to narrow it down to where we've actually got that proposed list of courses. And then once we get the proposed list, we start to look at, well, what's the impact on graduation? Where would we be placing course sequencing? What would the potential cost be? Would we have an enrollment? And when we kind of get through all of that, we end up before you. And that's a tight push because we were to the wire this year getting that final course list to you tonight to approve. I do want to take a minute before we look at our courses, just to talk about some of the major changes that are going to happen in this plan this year. The first one is, of course, our new courses. We are bringing to you tonight nine new courses in the business and industry strand. A lot of the CTE work has been done with CTE revisions. So this past summer, CTE did, at the state level, did a lot of revisions in course sequencing, course prerequisites, and what titles of courses would be and what new courses would be available. So we're bringing nine new business and industry courses, four public service courses. And I'm really excited because one of the things you asked me last year was what dual credit options do we have for CTE? And we are bringing two dual credit options tonight, one in the area of anatomy physiology and one for our E M T. We're proposing four STEM courses, one in engineering and three in computer science. And I'll talk a little bit about what happened there. And within those courses, two are going to be at the A P level. So that's great for our students that are wanting to take those courses, A P courses. We're proposing a new English course. And then we're proposing two math courses and two social studies courses. And then of course, designed for credit recovery. So when we looked at our content area, we felt like there were some additional courses we could have. We have a little bit of flexibility with our English four class. And we wanted to add a course there. And then we have some flexibility with our social studies. And so it just gives kids another option in place of maybe world geography or world history if they're looking to take something specialized. And so we're adding creative variety in the special topics in the Cold War and the Holocaust. And then we felt like it was important because we want to keep you up to speed on everything we're changing. We have 26 revisions in state courses, then titles for our CTE courses, just due to the state revisions. And maybe they, they no longer call it an advanced course. So if the actual content of the course changed, it did not change. The content, just semantics and maybe the name, we would place it on this list. One of the biggest things that has changed in terms of state revisions is our math sequencing. So the state changed the prerequisites for Algebra One, and this is really big. They changed it for the 15, 16 school year, but we didn't find out or sort of didn't get with us until the start of this school year. And so we put some modifications in place and tried to address it as best we could with our students currently in the course. But our practice has to change. We will do it next year. And that affects our students in seventh grade that have been taking Algebra One. And so now a prerequisite to take Algebra One is mastery of the eighth grade math course. And so we can't compact that into the sixth grade school year. And so the change is going to be, if you are a seventh grader and you're wanting to be in Algebra One, you will need to pass the credit by exam to show mastery of your eighth grade. Otherwise, we can still put you in an advanced math track. That would be, seventh grade would be your math seventh pre-A P. And in that, we are going to compact the curriculum between sixth and seventh grade to cover sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then in eighth grade, you would take your Algebra One. So that seventh grade year, we would have you completing your eighth grade course, taking a star eighth grade. So that we can in fact show mastery of eighth grade and then Algebra One, your eighth grade year. We are going to be communicating that clearly with parents when we need the summer and they choose the courses so that they can see. And we've also put it in our, in the planner in the middle school program that that is as a result of state prerequisite requirements. And then we also have a big change in our computer science strand. That was a new strand for last year. And again, with CTE revisions this year by the. And again, with CTE revisions this year by the state, the courses have changed. And so we propose the new courses. They are great for kids, this is great for kids in terms of there are now two AP courses within that strand. So when you think about course weighting, you think about, a lot of our kids are looking at choosing courses that are weighted heavier. We will have two of those courses in the computer science strand. We are still working with the state because the computer science strand is not in the CTE strands anymore, which is odd because technology courses are not under CTE. And so what that means is that as we look to offer those courses, we would have to use as a source of funding. We still want the courses because we believe in them. They are our representation of the top market. What our kids, our kids need those courses. We've just got to work to see what, who's going to maybe to jump with the state if any to try to keep them in CTE. Just so you'll know, this year alone, we did have 79 students take that first computer science course. So we feel like there's going to be a high interest. And I really believe that AP strand will move your math and science AP students into that strand as well.
Will also attract your top students.
It'll attract your top.
Your top students on those that weighted credit in their GPA and him and then AP offering will be attractive to those students.
And then in addition to, we have added, as a result of our district of innovation, we are adding our blended learning course at the high school level. We believe that's going to be government and economics at Belton High School and physics at New Tech. And that's going to be the course that Dr. Kinkan just talked about where it would allow flexibility. And we'd offer it first period or eighth period and you wouldn't be at school every day because some of the learning would be online. And that is extremely innovative for any, any school at the state. And then also, really excited about this, we are going to partner with dual credit with UTPP in addition to UMHB and Temple College. And what this is going to do is it's going to allow the flexibility for a student to take a dual credit course anytime during the day, in any period. And sometimes we have conflicts right now. So if the course is only offered with our Temple College first period and maybe you have an athletics class first period, you have to choose. This would allow you to put that dual credit anytime during the day. Would be online, but we do know of several kids taking courses through UTPP. We've heard great feedback and they're very supportive of the understanding of the role of a high school student taking college classes. The work is not done for CNI. We will be placing this upon approval of all the courses tonight. We will make sure that this goes out. It will be on the web and then on our website. And then Kim is, has already scheduled meetings with all the counselors and secondary as well as any principals at lecture attend to kind of go through it, talk about guiding, how to guide students on it. And then we'll continue to work on our, getting our advanced academics courses. Questions?
So we are acting on proposed new courses. Recommendation, have these, thank you for the background information about some of that information. But we have a request to have these courses as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Cowan, statement from Ms. Wainler? Want to ask your questions? All favorite votes, red hand. Ask, stand. Thank you for your work on this and getting this to that. Okay, let me, let me just ask, we're gonna, I want to take a brief break either now or after we do the location of the elementary school. Do you want to go ahead and do that one? Or do you want to have some, talk about that some more? We ready for that one?
On the location one?
Yeah, the location number thirteen, okay. Dr. Kinkan, we talked about this in our workshop setting. And so I guess we have the recommendation.
Yeah, we can draw the information.
So we've been through this multiple, two meetings, I believe, earlier. So we have the recommendation, Temple and Demographics, as well as Architects. Director of Design are here to go over that, Kim. And you agree with that recommendation that we should at this time go with the Poison Oak site as the most cost efficient and most efficient for attendance boundary planning location? I think all of us certainly, so many times, wish we had a perfect site that was better for us. This is the best of our available options, so. Is there a motion to approve? A motion, Ms. Wainler, second from Mr. Cowan. Any comments, questions? All favorite votes, red hand. Ask, stand. Big ask is five yes, no, against, and one abstention. Mr. Carr. Thank you for making sure. Okay, at this time, it's, I don't know, it's 7:27. We're going to take just a brief break. We're going to reset into workshop to pick up where we were in our workshop. But if you need to take a brief break to go take care of any personal needs, we'll be right back just after a couple, few minutes. Thank you for holding with us. We want to take up, we actually need to back up because we weren't able to finish all of the items on our workshop agenda. So, I don't know. Which one are y'all? Do you remember where we were? We were, we, yeah, we got the boards back in here. I think where we got to was we had not progressed to the contracting method to a central bond program. But contracting methods is relevant because you made a comment that it depends on, on our methods that would determine some of our costs. So I think we need to finish this process out so we can go back through it. Where is Deanna? Deanna may need to come back up and help us write those.
So yes, we've talked through several decisions that we're looking forward to move forward with the elementary school and the high school project. You just made those decisions on the elementary school side. We appreciate that. And so one of the other decisions is about contracting method. And in the January board meeting, we presented seven methods for contract delivery that are available to a school. But two in particular, we see are the primary ones for solution and competitive sealed proposal, which is a qualification based election for the district grades metric. And then the other is construction manager at risk, where you bring in individuals or at least during the design process to provide affordability and cost input along the way. At that meeting, we talked about some of the pros and cons between those two methods. From the pros on competitive sealed proposal is you're able to select not just based on cost, but qualifications. But right now, the con is that they are selected at the end of the design phase. So it's more like a traditional bid that you open it up to the public and you receive prices, qualifications, and then you select what is the best value to the district. For the construction manager at risk, in this process, you do get that early input. You also have that opportunity for multiple bid package bids. Speed becomes a concern with the design process. We've got plenty of time at this point. But then on there, you still get the same accountability and responsibility from the construction manager. Here, it's a little bit more transparent, being able to look at the bidders along the way. You understand how the money is going into there. And it's a very open process. And feel very confident with both of those, getting good control over the funds that are being spent on the project. Here, there is, the GC, it's, GCs are typically capable of acting as a CMR. And then generally between the two, we see a split between a lot of the work, between CMR and CSP here in the industry about which option to choose. It usually comes down to time or complexity of the project. We do feel comfortable with either one of them. And I think either one would be a choice for the district. So we are looking for your input and selection on those.
But I guess, to talk about, we have two different projects. And obviously, we have a relatively simple project in an elementary school. And I say relatively, obviously, there's no simple construction project. But compared to a comprehensive high school, it's a relatively simple project and straightforward. And we have a model of how we've done that recently, in recent years of building those. So we know what to expect and what to kind of. The high school, though, is a very different concept. And I've heard, there seems to be so many moving pieces in that of what you can do in terms of square footage and adjustments that you can make on, on a number of things. And it's a big, big project. It seems to me, from what I've heard from you, we need more flexibility for the high school project than we would for the elementary project. Elementary is much, there are not a lot of variables. It, you're kind of, the plan will be what it is, and there's a ton of options. It's, we know what we want. We've got, we've filled three of them in recent years. We know what we want. So it seems more straightforward. And I guess from my, my hearing, that it seems like the competitive sealed proposal would be a good option for that project. Whereas the high school being much more complicated and so many variables that have to fit together. You're going to need estimating along the way. That would lean towards the CMR process. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. So as we talk about the cost, but the more that you drive the cost down, the finer those opportunities are. The more that part can help you along the way as well as you did. So you get your input during that design process. And that would definitely be key for the high school.
Okay. And then I heard you say earlier this evening when we were doing our workshop that the cost estimates are based on using a CMR plan because the cost could be higher. That there's actually no cost difference.
Sorry about that.
Okay, what do you?
There is no cost difference between the two. And I think that's where upfront, you bid the CMR fee upfront. And so you know that that's competitive CMR and GCs. And it is competitively bid once the drawing's through. So you're getting the competitive process entirely through.
Okay, I thought I heard you say something about it. It might affect the cost of the program. Is that, the sentence, good, thank you for clarification. We have questions about, or thoughts about the method. Seems like we can do both, experience, experience with both.
So we're saying each school would be different, the elementary would be contract.
Okay, the sealed proposal. So we could do the elementary school under a CSP and do the high school as a CMR. And that would, well, let me, let me turn and ask this question. Is that going to make it more complicated for us? One of the things that we, I don't want to go back over that, but we want to make, make efficiency for you as architects or our staff, administrative staff. Is that going to, is there a variable there that we need to consider?
There would be some efficiency if we're all underneath one, but you would, in essence, put all your eggs in one basket. See how the way that, the experience you had before. But really, the concern that I would have in terms of if you award it all underneath one project, there's a limited pool of contractors that would get that. You may eliminate some of your local partners.
So this is an advantage of separating, then would also, we would have a larger pool for the elementary site and might give some better prices and some other opportunities, some local, that makes sense to me. If it does increase your work or, or our folks.
They're not two identical projects. They're not going to be running two identical samples.
We could do CMR for both projects if decided, correct? And under separate contracts.
Yes, that's true. You could have a CMR.
Now, with CMR, are you going to be, is it going to be a faster process for the, the elementary schools happening soon? And so is it, is the CMR going to help speed that process up? I know it's faster because they're, they're involved in the process, but.
Right now, we're generally hearing 15 months for construction for an elementary school. So that, I mean, you'd be talking maybe a month, but even at that point, we're still delivering in the summer. We want to be a full year in advance, you know, so the speed isn't necessarily a concern at this point.
We are speeding up the high school, though, so that we can open a year early. Moving the law issue back six months so we can gain a full year on the high school.
Correct. So there is some, some speed issues on the high school, but not necessarily on the elementary.
So our, then?
Well, I have a question. I'm at Los Angeles, advisor. Are we able to have our hand in this contract with CMR? Or we understand the language? If I recall, when we did this last time, there were just things we might have worded differently within the contract or all of that. Is that, do we have, is this a generic contract again, or do we have flexibility on that? Or do you even know?
We would negotiate a contract with the, with the, either way. So yes, we would, that would be a negotiated, something that we work through with whomever we hire.
So they, they bring it to us and we, we know kind of how to.
Sure, absolutely.
On, on the two projects we bid over the last two years, we worked with Angela to get the right forms in place that have been edited by Angela to meet her needs and then implemented those during the design. The contractors knew what they were getting when they said, hey, I'm going to build this for.
That's a great example of the projects that we've completed here recently have been different.
We have a different management team.
Yes, yes, right. Good, lots of moving parts. Does anybody have a, I mean, my sense is it might be interesting to do both, to see, but I don't know. I don't feel real strong about it necessarily. It does seem that the CMR is the logical way to go for the high school. But it seems like you go either way. We have more potential bidders for a CSP than we would in a CMR for the elementary. Is that right? And, but, but those points, we'll take them. They don't have to be combined either in a CMR. It'd be a separate CMR.
That's what we should.
Yeah, probably, right. So, anybody have an opinion on that? Talk.
Yeah, I think because the site that you chose earlier, that variables are not there. Like you see, the largest type of license, utilities are on site, roads are on site. I think it's a perfect job to take the competitive sealed proposal versus CMR. I think your competitive build, you might see a little bit less expensive than, you know.
There's no way to know unless you did two identical and did it. But, but it seems interesting to, you know. I'm comfortable with that. Anybody, I mean, that would be, what I'm hearing is a reasonable plan. A CMR, is that something you'd come up with?
That is what we, we, we're planning to recommend to you. Or we've visited Jared about it at least previously, and we think that would work well.
This may be a little out of sequence because we need to go back and do our other things where it is and the items on our agenda. So we could go ahead and take action on this before we call on this you frankly. So the recommendation at this point is to use the construction manager at risk for the high school and a competitive sealed proposal for the elementary school.
And to authorize superintendent to rest.
Yeah, I need to, yeah, we need to make sure we get that. Or, somebody want to make that motion?
All right, I'll start with, "An unauthorized superintendent to issue a request for proposals and/or qualifications as appropriate for the projects, select a committee to evaluate and rank the proposals and bring the recommendation rankings back to the board for approval."
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second from Mr. Camden. That's for both.
That's for both. So you're.
What's one motion for both?
Competitive sealed proposal as construction delivery method for elementary school number 11 and construction manager at risk comprehensive high school number two and authorizing the, everything that might.
To do the RFQ. Okay, that's good. Thank you. Make sure we got it right. So I have motion from Chris Towne, second from Chris Camden. Any other comments, questions? All favorite votes, red hand. That has to be announced. Okay, we have a delivery method. We just don't know what we're going to have a do yet. Oh, well, that's not true. We kind of, we agreed on the, the package for, I, you know what? What are we doing with the two alternates that what we haven't finalized? Yeah, we did. We said yes on those two. What will be our delivery method for those two projects? That can be separate?
We'll break those back to you.
That's not an emergency. Right, and, and so we'll come back at a later point for that, but those would be, those are smaller projects, so they'd be, however, they are not necessarily packaged together anyway. Okay, so, so what do we need to do? We need to go back to looking at, we've, we've gained consensus on a May election, we've talked about the delivery method, we can check that off now, we have our site, our program costs, our gym and auditorium, we've talked about our capacity size issue, and so what we need to make a final decision mark, thank you, is the cost and size we have been talking about, B, as our option, not A, C, or D. So, it seemed like we've gotten to narrowing down to option B, and I think we had pretty firm consensus on that. The question becomes, what is the target number? So, Jared, I'm gonna ask you, maybe if you could back up, I think it's back up a slide. That, and this one, yes. We are using B, so let's, let's try to eliminate A, C, and D off of that, and the question becomes, I guess I've, you've had some time to, hour or two to think about this since we talked about it. Can you talk about the target number that you've given us and the rationale behind why that is a good target number for us to focus on?
Which target number?
Two forty-five.
Two forty-one. So, when we started the process, we originally had targets in mind, and so we backed into those of some reasonable steps to be able to achieve that. Two sixty square foot is what we see generally in the industry moving towards this. To me, two twenty-five becomes a very economical approach, and to me, as we've discussed between future planning for Belton and for, we know that there's a need coming forward and balancing that with the desire to create a 21st century learning environment. To me, that, that finds that balance between those two options, weighing those out. So, I think that's where, to me, the genesis of the two forty-five came from, it doesn't have to be neither or, it could be somewhere in the middle.
And it gives you some flexibility. But it needs the needs.
Exactly.
So, so you're comfortable with that number?
Yes.
Right? And the square footage that comes with that and the, and the programming elements that come.
Two forty-five gives us the quality school that we've been talking about administratively. We've put about that number, we've met with Jared and his team on multiple occasions, and I think that's a great value to the school district, and that Plan B with a 385,000 square foot high school is going to meet the long, meet our needs long term and give us the capacities that we need for our high school population.
Well, that's good enough for me. Anybody wanna have a different opinion?
And that's the twenty, that's twenty-five hundred students high school, twenty-five hundred core, built for twenty-five hundred students, classrooms, and.
CTE and all of the things that we want to be equitable with Belton High School. But modernized, obviously.
Sure.
But it still gives us under that hundred and fifty that we talked about.
Yes.
Just because we have the bonding capacity to go larger than that, doesn't mean we need to go.
And we certainly, I think we came to consensus earlier, there's no reason to max out our bond capacity, even if we wanted to, we don't need to, we don't want to, we need capacity for future growth. Jennifer is still here, actually, if we have any questions for her, but she gave us that number with some variables that could make it even lower, and so this is below, a little bit below what we've been talking about, it seems like a reasonable number. Is this, is this something we can, is this a bond package we can keep consensus on and approve, or recommend, ask the administration to go forward and bring us back documents to vote on? Is anybody not okay with that? Okay, well, I think then, cross off that other one, it appears that we have, I just wanna review our things, we, we have.
Can you now?
Yeah, I know, we're gonna get there, hang on, hang on. I wanna do the check boxes first. We have agreed on to working for the May election for bond issue, the cost of the bond program is approximately one forty-nine point, one hundred and forty-nine point seven million dollars, and I'll, I'll ask you to kind of work those numbers back and make sure they're right, work with our staff, to work with the attorneys, who will need to do that. The delivery method we've talked about, you can check that off, basically. And those, that's based on our needs, not necessarily, we could go higher if we wanted to add some extras, but we, we wanna go based on just what we need and, and provide it a cost-effective manner. We've approved our delivery method previously, we have our site for elementary school, we have our program cost for elementary school, we concluded the Lakewood Music and Gym and the Auditorium upgrade, check that off, and we have approved the, I don't wanna call it option, what, what do we call it? B, the capacity size of twenty-five hundred core and classroom, and the cost and size using a two hundred and forty-five dollar target, which again, gives us a total cost that you can work with the CMR and work with our staff to begin to work around square footage and costs to decide. We still have some decisions to make in there, obviously.
Correct, and I, I first it is, we're looking at a high school that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five point six million dollars.
Okay, I think that's, that's the right way. So, if we check that off, check that box off, then we get to our total package cost of twenty-one point three million for elementary school eleven, one point seven million for the Lakewood Music and Gym addition, one point one million for the Wall Street Auditorium upgrade, and one hundred and twenty-five point six million for the comprehensive high school number two, for total bond package of one hundred and forty-nine point seven million dollars. Is that everybody's understanding? Are we comfortable with asking the administration to go forward with bringing us the legal documents to approve that at our next meeting on February sixth, I believe? Yes. Okay, so, the next item then is to approve the schematic design for elementary school eleven and the comprehensive high school, which we obviously needed to have those steps before we could do this step.
That's correct.
Six on your list.
So, this is the step, this, all the work today has been pre-designed services in terms of getting towards starting schematic design, understanding the program, how, how big is it, how much, what is the budget, working through those elements, and from here, we could really kick off the schematic design process, starting to look at the size and relationship of the spaces, working through the budgetary items, if, as the scene of risk comes on board, we're working with them on budgeting. But right now, we'd start moving forward on the high school with a three hundred and eighty-five thousand square foot school, supporting twenty-five hundred students core and classrooms for roughly a hundred and twenty-five million dollars total project. Located at, do I?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five points, I don't have a cheat sheet here.
Twenty-five points that we're looking at.
Located more, on the north side of town, next to High Point Elementary School, and then for the elementary school, we'd be looking at twenty-one point three million. Elementary school located on the Poison Oak side.
These numbers are rounded off, so we might need to, we, we'll round that a little bit as we move forward and when we formally approve it, but those are pretty close, actually.
And then, so based on that information, we would start meeting with the district to go into the details of the program and then ensure on both the elementary school, if there are any updates of the prototype that they would like to see, but start that design process and starting to engage engineers, internists for both projects.
So, part of the schematic, pardon, part of the schematic is also working on site design, master site planning and all that.
Yep.
Exactly, what's timeline on that?
So, right now, generally, we're three to four months for schematic design, and we can play that by year in terms of the information, just only go out and get a GTE report survey on the sites and move forward with those items as well. Right now, overall, and this goes to discussion, we were looking at completing the design phase, which is schematic design, design development, and contract documents in the late first quarter, early second quarter of 2018. So, basically, a year from now, we would be going out to bid for both projects, one under the CMR, one under the CSP process.
Trendy to that. So, from now, three months, three months would be get us into April, so we're looking at a May sixth election, would we have schematic designs prior to the election day? Certainly would prior to the early voting, but.
So, yes.
We could have it by then. I think, the reason I ask that is, when we started this process three years ago, one of the things that we've tried to do is give as much information out and have as much available to our community to know what they're approving and voting on, and so the more, more we can give them, the better, I think. And so, the, these are rough, and, and so really aren't, wouldn't make any sense to go tell somebody this is what it's gonna look like, because that's not what it's gonna look like, probably.
Exactly.
What we need is the next level of, of design.
And that's what.
And we could have that prior to.
Mostly with the administration and Kyle, and kind of that information is going out and those things, yes.
Okay, so we need a, we have a recommendation to authorize O'Connell-Robinson to proceed the schematic design for elementary school number eleven and comprehensive high school number two. Our motion to approve, motion for Mr. Norwood, second for Mr. Camden, all favor of the most, red hand, passes unanimously. Thank you, and Jared, I thank you for your work. The one thing I didn't, I listed all that stuff, and I wanted to go back and add, based on Jennifer's work in advising us and Phil Haggerty's work with business office and helping, working with her on that, we're projecting this to be in the eighteen point something cent range, and, and again, we'll get, as we finalize some of these notes, then we'll have even better data to share with our community, the more detail we can give, the better. But it's exciting, and, and I would just add, for all of us, we spent three years plus working towards this, almost four now, as this goes, working towards these kinds of decisions, and it's been a process, it's been an inclusive process that's involved a lot of people in our community, and a lot of meetings. As a board, we've spent a lot of hours in meetings, and I know the administration's spent many, many, many meetings and hours working with our architects and, and our advisors and others to bring us this information, but it's an exciting time for a school district. And it is exciting to finally have, know where we're headed. So, we will, this kind of leads me to the next item, well, actually, I'm jumping, but we're gonna have a meeting, we have scheduled a meeting already for February sixth for superintendent's summative evaluation, but we will add to that agenda to call the election. We will need to call the election for trustee places also, but we will add that to the agenda for that meeting and ask you and Angela and Phil and everybody to work up the documents that we will need to do that. So, anybody? These students are concerned for future agenda or administrative reports, have you any questions yet? And I'm, Amanda, I'm gonna, do you have anything you wanna share?
Um.
Not yet, not yet? Okay, anything you need? Okay, Mike?
Okay, just checking. I would just mention, Brothers has filed for reelection and the trustee at large election, so glad to see that at this point. That, that filing is open, and I forgot the dates for that, if somebody can tell me that. Couple of things I wanna make sure is on your agenda, January twenty-sixth, that's later this week, a couple of, Thursday, the Belknew Tech High School at Wasco Academic Excellence Awards Ceremony, we have our hall meeting on the sixth, and also wanna put on your calendar, the Belle County Youth Fair is the sixth, fifth, tenth, that week at the expo, wonderful opportunity to see many of our students doing just great things. Our next regular meeting after the sixth will be on the twenty-seventh, and we already know some of our agenda items for that meeting. I think that's all we have to do. At this time, the board is gonna go into closed session for a short, closed session on personnel, so we, we are not, do not anticipate to have any need for any action when we return, so you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go home. Thank you for hanging with us tonight. See you today, too.
It can be in an open session, there be no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.